Hmm.
Go ahead and get this meeting started. Thank you all for joining us for our common council special meeting. Today is Thursday, January sixteenth, twenty twenty four, and it is nine oh one AM. Just a reminder, if you're in-house here, please mute your cell phones. And if you're on Zoom, just keep your mic muted until called upon or until you're speaking. Amy, will you go ahead and do a roll call for us?
Yeah, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor Jordani.
Yes.
Council President Shay.
Yes.
Council member Obenoff.
Yes.
Council member Bergen.
Yes.
Council member Mahoney. Council member Reed.
Here.
And some member Davis.
Yeah. Thank you. Notice of agenda compliance for Idaho Code seventy-four dash two zero four. Finding that the special meeting notice and agenda were posted in accordance with Idaho Code seventy-four dash two oh four within twenty-four hours prior to the meeting. At the Bell, the city of Bellevue City Hall, post office, and on the city's website on January fifteenth, twenty twenty five.
I moved up. I moved that the, the meeting was posted in accordance with Idaho Code seventy-four two oh four.
Second. All in favor?
Yes.
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 Call for conflict about my Idaho Code seventy-four dash four zero four, any conflict with you can receive for today's meeting. Okay. Then we will go ahead and move right into starting our work session here.
Okay. Alrighty, so thank you all for coming. You know, this is new year, new council. I just kinda wanna get the ball rolling and make sure we're all on the same page and we're all moving in the same general direction. So first off, we're gonna just kinda go through some housekeeping items on meeting preferences. Again, we're thankful for you guys committing your time and serving the community and being on council. We do have expectations that you are prepared for meetings and have read the packet and all that. So first off, is there anything staff can be doing to make your lives easier on that front, to make sure that you guys can be as prepared as you can?
Pockets earlier in the week, if we could have it by Monday and Tuesday to like wholly dissect all the information.
My goal right now is Wednesday.
Great.
Um, and then if we could, then let's see how Wednesday goes.
Yeah.
Yeah. See if we could pull back further to Tuesday. I think that would be kind of the earliest it would happen, but the goal is Wednesday right now.
A lot of this section is writing checks for Amy to cash.
Yeah.
So I wanna be careful on making too many promises.
Yeah.
But yeah, I think like Christine was saying, uh, Wednesday is kinda what we're aiming for right now. Um, and there's the process that goes into it that.
Yeah. I understand and studying agendas they got, yep.
Excuse me, I think, uh, I find that a lot of the materials that are included in the packet are not properly curated. And thus, the packets are far too long. They include information that should have been condensed into a single page and presented as an argument or an explanation rather than, and, and we were all guilty of this, so it's not in particular, but I don't, printing out webpages of pricing or even in the case of ClearGov, including the entire packet, there were things that should have been extracted and presented to say, these are the arguments. And I don't know if it's possible with the creation, you know, what's required, but with the technology we're employing, there's a lot of additional information that I don't know that you have to print in the packet. I, I don't know the rules. But even then, we can link to those proposals online, the full proposal. But the information that should be included for immediate distillation and what the arguments are, are in the packet, if you want additional information, you can look further if you find the arguments lack, you know, are not compelling, but to suddenly go from two hundred to twenty-five pages is a meaningful, you know, actions where we can get through it more quickly, even if you can't get it out until Thursday.
There was a couple of things Brian and I had talked about, but um, like in terms of the legality for some of the things coming from the planning department have to be.
And, and maybe that's true, yeah.
But there are, you know, there was also a discussion a little bit about staff members being a a little more robust and then not relying as, you know, as much on our, kind of a little more arbitrary secondary documents that would accompany them.
And, and is it possible in that construct that when you have the department head reports, that the presentation is, is live, but maybe the bullet points have been highlighted? And then the delving into that, it's more readily available through the tools again that we're providing. There's gonna be budget information. There are going to be milestones. And just wondering, you know, isn't it our job to be keeping up on that? So we are already prepared before you even know the agenda. It's time for the department reports. They're gonna give their assessment, but we should have gone through what um, is readily available in the, the tools on a, on a weekly, a monthly day, whatever our requirement is for, for oversight. Does that make sense?
So kinda not, not necessarily including everything in the package, but instead, you know, having, you know, include ClearGov, for example, just kind of that stuff that's just available for anybody anytime to go look at and just expect you guys to.
Yeah, change our process to support and facilitate a more informed and incisive um, discussion at the table. They come in and present that way. We engage the staff. The staff gets to, you know, ad lib even if they want, but we've looked, we should have questions based on how the project plans have proceeded in last month. And we should, you know, that's part of our job too, because in the past, we haven't, we don't hear about it. So you can't strictly be relying on the, the department report to say, and this is where this is. We all have a tendency to not wanna talk about things that aren't going particularly well. And now we're going to have the tools to, to examine that and then see how our department heads perceive their departments are doing in that month.
Right, and I see what you're saying Suzanne, like, but like this last meeting, for example, and I was looking through and I got just messed up on the ordinances because there was so much in between. So I don't know on the organizational level, like that whole part of the packet of like a whole book, maybe that's in the back and what we're going through and the key points. And like, this is how much it is and the breakdown instead of like.
So kind of like, there's almost like that hefty, if there are supporting documents or maybe in a, a back section of the binder.
Yeah.
And I should flip them through the binder, and this is good feedback for Amy, as we're slipping through the binder, it's like, you know, she writes them out like, I don't know this. And then it's like, like an appendix, kind of, yeah, okay. Yeah, that sounds like a good option.
Yeah.
And then that kind of takes us to um, preferences for printed versus accessing online and kind of thinking about how you guys would like information presented to you. Of course, the packet's coming to digitally. Um, and then we have, you know, paper typically in-house for meetings, but if someone, you know, prefers to bring their laptop over printing paper, you can also let's not individual preferences to see if it exists in terms of packets.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of like bringing my laptop was appropriate for council meetings, not, so I didn't know. Cause paper, I like having my notes in front of me, right? So if I can have my laptop, that's great. But also like I like writing notes in my binder.
You can have a note section. Yeah, I don't, I think it all is, you know, individual on how you can most effectively participate, so.
Right.
I don't see any issue in that. Um, and then maybe, you know, what's yours is that just you don't, you don't have the appendix, so you can just keep your laptop kind of thing. So, okay.
Can, can we always call up a document onto the screen too?
Yeah.
Or something onto page ten on this.
Exactly, always being on the same page and it doesn't.
And then so for people in the calls, so they can see that because that was the other thing, getting in the crowd so often, I'm like, what the heck are they talking about? And for our general public to know what to reference, right?
Yeah, it's like, like our last meeting, you're like on page ten, and I was, that was great reference for everyone in the room. And then if it was something, you could pull up onto the screen. Is that e- easy-ish to do?
Believe, I, I know with Adobe, I don't know with COFAX, if there's a way to just quickly, once you've assembled a packet, to add page numbers to the bottom, so that there is a definitive turn to page six.
Yeah.
Sometimes it gets you confusing when it's the assembly of fifty different documents that all have a page six. But I think we can do that. Um, and then yeah, putting it up on the screen.
And then I think is maybe something Suzanne or someone in the script had brought up about using the screens a little bit more for when we're discussing information. Um, and just kind of leaning on uh, slightly more presentation-based discussions and communication so that it's also better for people who are in-house. Who are kind of able to follow along with us a little bit better as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, the audience, yes, and, and staff.
Yeah, exactly. And, you know, you've done that so well with your presentations. You're just like, here we go. And we're all looking at the same thing.
So maybe moving in that direction. And that could be using simple tools that already exist, and then as we grow using the technology we're implementing on the backend, we'll find hopefully um, that can make it a little bit easier to move forward.
So so we've been having a lot of special meetings the last month or so. When things kind of stack up on the agenda and those things will need to get done, you guys.
Tony. Tony, I see your hand raised if you wanted to say something.
Oh, thank you. Just wanted to add, if possible, when the packet does become available earlier in the week, if I were to get the packet as well, or if it was posted publicly, not just for the, for the council, that would be very helpful in planning my previous stories of the meetings.
Of course. And Tony, just so you're aware, yes, it's online, but we have launched a newsletter that will be going out Fridays before city council meetings. So I'm also happy, I don't know if you're on that email list, but I'm happy to add you to that email list as well.
Yeah, please do. I did notice, I read the last one. It was helpful and I really appreciate the anecdotes from the departments and um, things that have built up and transpired during the meetings. So thanks for pointing that out and thanks for doing that.
Yeah, perfect. We'll add you to that mailing list.
Okay.
Um, yeah, if you were talking about special meetings.
You know, there could be times that we have a bunch of stuff on the agenda that we all, that needs to be done before a deadline. Do you guys want to have one big, long, regular meeting, or should we split those up into a shorter, regular meeting and a special meeting? What's your guys' preference as far as?
Sorry. For me, I guess it's one longer meeting because managing multiple multiple work, working full time and then, yeah, so splitting that up.
Yeah, I agree with, I agree with that.
Yeah.
Um, the only thing I would offer about that is that sometimes just very quick stand-up meetings, depending, I guess it really depends on the type of meeting, something that involves a lot of discourse. But versus other things that are, that are standard, we used to call them stand-up meetings, and it's was, you know, once a week or in the middle of the week. Ensure there are no blockers to process and that everybody's going in that direction. But maybe that's really more of a tool for the mayor with department heads and things and that we're dealing with things that are more.
I would suggest um, things where we have like range use planning type cases where you have public, place where there's public comment, that we have at least two meetings for those. So we have the first meeting where we present, where you staff report, maybe the applicant report some question answer, and then reserve a public comment for another meeting so people have, have a little more time to think about it. And I think it's probably more productive that way.
So kind of like, like informational?
Yeah. Cause you know, people are getting the packets Fridays.
Yeah.
Thursdays, and they've got their weekends to delve through some of the steps of. It might answer a lot of people's questions that show up on Mondays and then, then if they still have more, they kind of make their comments the next meeting. Make it's more of a, I think people are more, more of that way. I guess if I had to express a preference, I probably would go, and, and I have some flexibility in my schedule, so it's, you know, that in mind, so a little bit maybe different than some folks, but there was a consultant one time who said, yeah, if a meeting goes longer than two hours, it's gonna start to deteriorate. And, and I kind of agree with that, I mean, maybe two and a half, but after a while, it just starts to deteriorate. Um, and looking through old minutes, you know, meetings that went till eleven o'clock or late, you know, that, that's not productive. Um, and it's better from my perspective to say, yeah, we're gonna call it good tonight. We're gonna think about this, or we're gonna keep it open for additional comments or something like that, and then come back. I mean, I know there are timelines, it's much easier to do it, but other times, you know, just a little flexibility, it's a good thing.
I found just anything past two and a half, like once we got to eight o'clock, it was like, boom. So, yes, I'm in that kind of two to two and a half hour. Um, and that's something as we're building agendas too, we can kind of pay attention to.
Yeah.
Um, and, you know, there may be one hour meetings occasionally, but I think we have to probably swing a little bit more into that hour and a half to two hours zone typically with a lot of things we have coming up. But um, I feel like as I'm hearing, that's a little better than us grabbing special meetings. You know, or adding special meetings to get in there, so.
Okay, and I, I just wanna make sure I said a bunch of them. And you're right, if it goes too long, but especially depending on what the subject matter is, if it warrants a special meeting, then we should afford it a special meeting. These are serious decisions that we're making. So if we try to jam it in a regular meeting, it, it's nev-, it's never effective. And then we maybe make decisions that we wouldn't have, cause we're tired, we feel rushed, we feel if we're rushing, it, those are bad decisions we're making if we're trying to push stuff through. And I don't wanna, I don't wanna be doing that.
Something we did in the call that I would suggest, uh, we had a agreed-on cutoff time of, I think it was eight thirty, that uh, we'd get through whatever agenda item that was, and then the mayor would ask the council, how y'all feeling? Do you wanna keep going, wrap it up, or should we just cut the agenda, move into the next meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Kind of just have that escape route. And maybe the agenda's just set up in a way that, you know, oh, we got a critical item that we haven't attended to or connected.
Yeah.
They're earlier in the meeting or something.
That was um, something I wanted to kind of ask um, this group is if we do have, you know, kind of a public hearing or something that would take a lot of public comment on, preference on where that sits in the agenda. Um, we, sometimes it's, but at the front of it, sometimes in the middle, sometimes it's at the end. Being a new council, just thinking about, you know, as we move past the consent agenda, when we have people who are joining us kind of in city hall or on Zoom, sometimes it's nice to um, do that at the front end and kind of, you know, take care of the public hearing and the public comment section. And then do a little bit more of, you know, either the housekeeping or other discussions after that, in case people would like to get home or you know, preferences on placement of public hearings to kind of honor the participation of our citizens.
I, I a hundred percent support that because the tactic of having um, public hearings and public comment at the end of meetings, it was, it was actually a tactic in Los Angeles to try and outlast the residents. Um, and they would just, people would fade off, they'd have to get home, they'd have stopped in. So it's definitely resident facing when you say, hey, we prioritize your engagement.
Did I hear my, saw your hand up?
Yes, I did. Um, I think it's uh, important for us to um, make sure that if we have a public hearing on the agenda, we should try and do that. We should try and take care of public hearings first. A lot of times um, a, a representative uh, you know, is um, contracted or uh, you know, they have people that they've hired to represent them. And if they have to sit through an entire meeting, it's kind of um, a waste of their money. And so, you know, I think it's important for us to try and have those public hearings first.
I only thought some like five thirty for people who are working. Um, a lot of people don't get South Valley until six, six thirty, so I don't know how you time that for public comments. So in previous, like, when there's big, then big issues, a lot of people have come to me and said, I can't get there at five thirty. I don't get off till five and the traffic is backed up as soon as they can get down to Bellevue City, so.
We do typically have like, you know, claims, consent agenda, all that which pushes a little bit, that's something to be conscious of. If it's something, you know, we're taking quite a lot of comment on, maybe stacking one thing above it to just bump it over to the S six. So, without feedback. Brian, I see that there might be nine people not joined.
I think that's you all.
Okay, great. Thank you. So I just wanna make sure we weren't leaving anything out in that discussion.
Is, is this an appropriate time also? And I, I don't know if this is part, but um, you know, every meeting seems like it, it should be an opportunity, if the time affords for, for engagement with whatever residents have come. And I know there's the public comment part, but then there's, you know, maybe that's sometimes why public comment needs to come, but the public comment says, comments not on this agenda. And so we've turned, a meeting's transpired, they've heard some discussion, and sometimes there could be pertinent, you know, feedback at that particular time or things they want to bring up to report incident. Is there a value or, or the possibility, there is value, but is there the possibility of adding public Q and A for the last twenty minutes of the meeting? Or however much exists after completion of the meeting. So for people who are here, they can engage with the people at the table. In a back and forth, not the public comment where nobody was, you know, you just stare back at them.
I have a, a burning member question in terms of.
Yeah.
Yeah, is there any kind of?
Um, I think.
Yeah, you know, question for that.
That sounds like an after, an after meeting.
Yeah, at the end of the, after, at the end of the meeting.
And I mean, like not part of the meeting, but af-, you know, like.
You know what? You might be right. It's part of that. Some of us hang out, and some of us, us hang out and say, hey, we're available for questions for thirty-nine.
A lot of the questions, I think, um, you know, they're, they're pretty complicated and trying to solve them on the spot right then is going to be very difficult.
Especially if they're angry.
Yeah, and so I think like receiving comments, receiving questions, and then having a follow-up plan. Let's talk with staff, let's give it a couple of days and think on it, and then go from there.
So potentially meet the goal by responding to public comment in a timely fashion. Sorry, Rick, go ahead.
Well, for some, for some things, I think, you know, it's kind of a, some issues kind of demand maybe call for maybe some public comment during the, you know, you can always ask if you wanna comment on it. But for some of our quasi judicial type hearings or land use decisions, there is a public comment session. And if you open it back up again, then you have to get the applicant time to rebut something if new information comes out. So you either got real, new public comments. So you kind of need to do those kind of in an orderly fashion and process that for just regular agenda items, it's kind of a to city council, how they would, how they would see it.
I, I have noticed sometimes in meetings, like when, when the room is full and when there are items that aren't, that don't fall in the quasi judicial, you know, category that they were just talking about. And there's, you know, you can kind of sense in the room when there's an opportunity to add public comment to the agenda item. Um, so I would say kind of, we would, myself and the council could make that assessment from meeting to meeting. Um, and then what I would recommend is maybe adding something to some last statements at the end of the agenda that says if you have any comments um, on things that you've heard tonight, and we can direct people to email addresses or the public comment button on the website. And that way, like Brian was talking about, it gives a little more time for us to each staff answer questions in a, in a more completely thorough way and get back to citizens. So I think there's a couple layers, but it's, it's a great point.
Well, that sounds like a great, you know.
And I think just kind of utilizing those two tools in meeting and after meeting, uh, written comment would be the best way to move forward.
That sounds good. I'll also add that we are, Mayor Jordani is starting to do some town halls coming up.
Yep.
That'll be another opportunity for that more direct one-on-one engagement process.
The mayor has like kind of complete discretion on when to open something? You know, since we need public comment or a council person says, I think we need to open this, this kind of wide open discretion about doing that?
I mean, unless Rick tells me otherwise, I believe.
I don't, I don't, you know, like I said, unless you're like in, in lupus stuff, uh, you gotta kind of be.
I mean, it's nice to have that flexibility.
Yeah. You totally have the flexibility. There's no, there's no rules on that. I mean, like I said, my shift on somebody did it's has something at stake and then they've left, and then you're taking information on it and they haven't had a chance, and, and you're kind of violating their due process rights, so.
I'll just segue that into written public comment deadline. This is something that's been brought up, that, just something that we wanna outline kind of on the agenda um, and/or communicate in the newsletter. If we are receiving written public comment ahead of a, a council meeting, I would like to have a cutoff time um, Monday at noon, Monday at three PM. Sometime that feels appropriate for council and for staff to be able to collect all those public comments and then get them to us before the meeting that evening, so that we can actually read them, digest them, uh, be able to react to, you know, citizen participation in the time we bash it before we come into meeting. So my recommendation would be at noon. Um, just since our meetings are at five thirty, and then that gives, you know, Amy, um, or Brian, whoever's receiving a public comment, time to compile them, get them out to council, and, and get them in our packets as well, so that they're on the record. Um, but that might be, I, I think we kind of have to have a hard time kind of a deadline. Um, and then if we do receive comment after that deadline, it can be included in the record, but not, you know. Um, and then if we do receive comment after that deadline, it can be included in the record, but not, you know, present to you for the meeting. So I wanted to see what people's feedback was on that.
Well, I would, I would actually ask the signal now, you, you know, when we look at the public comment and for you're looking at it and saying, it's very difficult to manage public comment that comes in after the fact that needs to be included in packets and things like that. And, um, so that's a perfectly valid point. I guess one of my questions is, based on past history with public comment, are we even clear the role of public comment in decision-making at this point? I mean, how is it really valued in the process, right? We've had a lot of public comment that typically, um, at, at least in the, many of the public hearings related to text amendments and things like that, conceptually should have killed those things. And instead, it really hasn't. And so what is the role of public comment in decision-making for the council? Like, how does it, how do we, does it have a weight? Do they get, does public comment have more weight than something else, or how are we using it? Other than saying, oh, that was really interesting, nobody wants this, but let's have another meeting about it, right?
I mean.
Is this the right forum for this discussion?
Yeah, and I'm.
This whole thing is.
That's what, okay.
And I'm, you know, curious and exploring that too, where it's like, um, there is a large population within our community that works three jobs and they don't have time to make public comments, but.
Well, they need to, right? If you want representation, you have to participate in the, oh, and that's what's been the argument, right?
Right, and the reference, right, and so as a council member and people coming to me and I come to the group and I voice, and I vote, voice what people who are working three jobs and they're like, we wanna be represented. That's why we need housing, right? But, you know, then there's people who have the public comment, but if people are the loudest people in the room, then does that give them priority? I don't necessarily think, think so.
Well, I think that's part of the discussion.
Right?
So if the people vote, but only like we've seen it before, four hundred people in Bellevue typically vote across. And then every now and then we have a spike. So we've established in Bellevue that whoever does vote wins, even if it's only four hundred people. Is that also a process we're looking to circumvent? Because you're right, if we are participating or not.
No, I'm, but I'm saying, right, that's, it's a precedence.
Where you have, you seek your representation, you voice your opinion, and otherwise you're, and I'm not discounting your collection. So basically, we're saying, what are the different methods of collecting opinion? But at what point, like, why bother a public comment if somebody, Tom or Jessica or I are gonna come in and say, well, all the people I've spoken to want this, right?
I think you have.
Well, here's an example, so if somebody's got a piece of property zone for a particular type of business and they apply for that type of business, just cuz people don't want that business, unless we're willing to pay them, cuz it's a taking. And if somebody, if, if the public comes out and says, I don't want this business here, you guys deny it is based on a public comment. Um, we could be sued.
Yeah, well, I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm asking what your role is.
So if you wanna wait public comment, I mean.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Where does that fit in the process?
It's just, it is what it is. You guys were elected, people elected you to make decisions. And, uh, unless they throw you out, um, of office, then I'm assuming maybe they're happy with the decisions that you're making.
I would say each individual council person, I go back to this, has their metrics in which they are going to make decisions and they're going to weigh decisions. Um, I think we have seen public comment swing throughout the last year in kind of styles of public comment. I'm not discounting canned response public comment, but we have seen versions of that where it is people signing on to kind of scripted to public comment. We've seen individual public comment written in. We've seen people make public comment in, you know, in City Hall. And so I think that it is the responsibility of each council person to determine their metric and weight of, you know, how they receive public comment, how they weigh against their decision-making, and how they feel they are representing their constituents who have, um, you know, voted and into office. And so I think it is the duty of the city to properly present public comment to council members um, and for packets and for record. And so that's kind of what we're talking about is kind of what does that look like from a logistics kind of expectations and timeline standpoint? And then from there, as we see, you know, we might see the way public comment changes throughout the year. Engagement changes throughout the year. That can be, uh, you know, discussion with, within council meetings to say, you know, how, how, how are you factoring that in in your decision, Tammy? Tom, you know, we received thirty comments. How does that weigh on, you know, what you are thinking here? And I think that can be part of the discourse, and that's in an individual metric for each council person.
I think that's a great explanation.
Yeah.
And, and it goes right to your point of saying, we need them by noon so they can be properly presented, so.
Yeah, of course.
Okay, I, I guess, I, I don't have a problem with a deadline, cuz I appreciate it. If, if people are gonna read them, you need them in advance. Um, one kind of, but on the other hand, someone might show up at a public hearing and they say, hmm, I'm not really much of a public speaker, but I have these five thoughts and it's two pages. I would like to submit that to council. Um, or they have comments that they make and they just summarize them, but there's more points made in these written comments. Uh, or they come in at five o'clock instead of noon. Um, I'm still interested in those, I guess, and, and so one way kind of to, uh, address that, I've seen previously is say, well, to receive adequate consideration, they should be in by noon. Because otherwise, we are not gonna have time really to review them. But, but that's kind of a soft deadline, honestly, you know, it's, doesn't preclude them coming into a hearing and saying, here's my written comments, and we might think they're great, but if we don't consider them because they weren't in by noon, I think that's unfortunate.
And I think it, what I was kind of commenting on is, it would have not been considered, but I like your, um, word adequate consideration. Um, you know, we will always do our best to have them presented printed, things like that. I mean, if they come in after five thirty once the meeting has, you know, taken place digitally, that's a different situation. But, um, I think the out of, the delineation between, you know, the adequate consideration versus, of course, they're still accepted. Um, just, you know, giving people fair time to process the comments and be able to u- utilize them in their decision-making as council members.
Well, I think, yeah, so. I think that circles back to my point I made earlier. I think it's more, I think we have more value in public comment if, when we have public comment type hearings that we maybe iterate them a little bit so that there is a, there's a presentation aspect of it, and then people have time to think about it and get more meaningful comments and based upon.
The decision isn't made that.
Right, not, not that, right. Sometimes, some stuff you can probably do, it's pretty simple, almost ministerial type, type things. But there's some things that I think, I think you get more value if people have more time to, um, think about it and then, then make the public comments. And so, and then you guys get better information, cuz there is a lot of good information out there from our public that, uh, they bring up issues that we can think about or something like that, so.
Um, so yeah, a couple things that I'm gonna add, uh, to like Thomas saying, like, have a deadline, but then still accept it. What we've typically done in other cities is have that deadline, and then after that, they're printed out. And when I give my staff presentation, I'll say their additional comments, would you guys like a few minutes to, to review those, or should we keep them? Uh, and so you guys kind of have that option at that point. And then another thing is just on the mail notices and the, probably not the newspaper because that costs money. Uh, but the mail notices and the, um, signs have some, some best practices on, you wanna participate in the process? Here's how you do it, here's how you engage it, and here's like how it's going to be meaningful.
Mm-hmm.
And how, like, just kind of that.
Speaking of those notices, like, since we have social media, from what I understand from my booklet is that since we have social media, we should be posting those online as well, on social media. So I don't know if there's a condensed bullet point that's just easy like this, my day's upcoming meeting. Um, cuz I helped manage it before, but I don't have the time to manage it, so.
So the agenda.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Yeah. Just posting as many places as possible, right?
Hmm.
Posting as many places as possible, yeah.
Correct, yeah. So from what I understood in reviewing the usual standards and policies on meetings, special meetings or any of that, if you do have social media, that needs to be posted.
Uh, I don't know if there's a function in mailroom when we send out the newsletter, has the agenda?
We are connect, we're supposed to publish there. I just need to get the login.
Okay. Well, I was gonna say, is there a social option that just says, here's the newsletter with the agenda that automatically goes to our account?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just didn't apparently plug it in properly, okay. I need the login, I need the login, but absolutely it does to Instagram and Facebook and.
Yeah, I'll put you on Meta. Um, I'll put both of you on there, so then you can manage that. Amy's on there, but the business manager, and then it just, everything should just automatically.
Great, and it will automatically post.
Places.
And then that will change too within staff of who will manage that as well once we get everything. Perfect, thank you. Well, unless there's a little bit more kind of in that housekeeping category, and if things pop up as we kind of go through this, feel free to comment on that. I'd love to move on to kind of hide in the, our twenty twenty-four achievements and updates on ongoing projects.
Also, note, there's snacks and coffee.
There is snacks and coffee for everyone in the room who.
I know, I saw that over in the corner and I was like, what? Bellevue!
That's right.
Thanks, guys. Thank you, Brian. I'm gonna just do that.
Please do. Um.
Tony has another.
Oh, Tony, go ahead.
I'm sorry, that was an accident.
Okay, no problem. All right, so let's. There's a little, maybe a button back.
I know, I'm just not, thank you. I'm not, uh, good at that function.
Okay, so we're just gonna kind of look at, you know, what's been achieved and going well. And then kind of that gives us a little bit of a, a basis to start off with our kind of goal setting for twenty twenty-five. Um, kind of one of the top things that was a great achievement for twenty twenty-four was staffing all of our department heads' positions. Um, it's kind of moving into this year with, um, every department having a department head um, and having kind of oversight within those departments and now, uh, kind of management within those departments and, uh, someone to refer to, rely on, someone to be managing projects within those departments. Um, so just kind of a really great achievement for Bellevue after the last few years of, um, kind of being quite bare bones and relying a lot on contracted services. So really moving in that direction of keeping things in-house, contracting as necessary to fill any voids, but, um, kind of the decision-making, the day-to-day coming from people within our community, living in our community, um, seeing what's happening in Bellevue on the day-to-day. So, um, I'm very happy about that. Um, second thing is, it's a kind of, something we started at the end of last year, we're gonna roll into, is, uh, moving in the direction of more transparency. Um, you know, more open communication within our community to our constituents. Um, and then also more open communication within our departments, now having everything staffed. Um, making sure that there are appropriate staff meetings happening on a regular basis within City Hall. Um, cross-department communication, uh, which allows for more cross-department accountability between, um, staff. And then that accountability will then kind of go back out into the community. Um, so thank you for your approval on Monday night of some technology to help us support staff and moving in that direction. Um, a couple of things that we kicked off at the beginning of the year was a newsletter, um, which I know has existed in the past. We didn't reinvent the wheel, but we reinvigorated something that, um, the community really enjoyed many, many years ago and, um, gave very easy access to information that they had come to appreciate in years past. So just bringing that back and adding a little bit more depth to it where, um, some updates from departments and, you know, palatable information about things coming out of streets or public works or building and something. And kind of trying to, you know, piggyback on Rick's idea of breaking out the information to have more effective public hearings. Um, not just posting the agenda, but pulling some co- some more of the complex information off the agenda and, um, giving a little bit more anecdotal factual kind of, uh, broken down information that's digestible to the community so that, um, you know, they're not reading through twenty pages, trying to kind of understand everything. We're, we're giving them a little bit of an over, overview information about what they could engage in. Um, so that right there, and then, um, you know, moving away of using our online tools, uh, to create more information for, um, the public, more information, um, for staff, collaboration and accountability, um, and kind of project management tools. Um, little bit on water and sewer updates. Um, some positive things that previous Mayor Johnson had and had kind of pushed us forward with is moving in the direction of doing an ICRIM, um, insurance claim to get working on the, um, getting the sewer plant back online. Um, that was a very kind of long, arduous process to get that claim started. Um, we have activated the first step of that claim, which is electrical work down at the sewer plant. Um, and that work did start, uh, Monday of this week. So the electricians are out actively working on, um, kind of solving the electrical issues that happened when the plant went down. Um, and with that, once, um, it's kind of the first step, get those fixed and then do another layer of analysis if needed of, once all that electrical is firing, what else, you know, what else needs to be fixed? What's the next step that needs to be fixed? So, um, understanding that, you know, that took quite some time to get that going. But with the ICRIM, um, insurance claim happening, um, and the authorization to basically rebuild the plant back to what it was, which is what the insurance claim is offering in terms of payment. Um, we now have a public works director down managing that and kind of monitoring the contract of electrician work. Um, and he'll be reporting back to us as that process happens. It's about a three to four week process on that electrical work. Um, and water updates, um, you know, we are, we did pass the bond in twenty twenty-four, um, which kickstarted our water project. Um, with the weather, we're at a bit of a standstill on terms of, um, kind of next steps, just because survey needs to happen. And unfortunately, um, a lot of the landmarks are covered in snow at this time. So we'll see, um, kind of movement on that in the spring. Um, so that's kind of just a couple of the accomplishment level twenty-four, twenty twenty-four water and sewer updates. Um, next one would be the onboarding of Casell. That is something that we have been, uh, discussing and discussing and discussing. Um, it took kind of great work from our treasurer, again, having that department head take on, um, a project and, uh, get to work on getting that implemented. So we're very close to flipping the switch on Casell and that being, um, operational here in the next, I would say, I don't wanna put Shelley's timeline for her, but from what I'm hearing, month should be, you know, there. We're, we're, we're very, very, very close, which will increase the efficiency, um, and kind of remove some of the human error in the billing process for, uh, water and sewer and, um, increase a lot of efficiencies in the treasury and kind of, uh, accounting department. So we look forward to that. And that all, of course, then ties back into, um, a lot of the monitoring, metering and, uh, work that will happen within water and sewer. And then, um, last one would be the transportation master plan, and Brian's been, yeah, experienced on this.
Just, so you guys are all in form, uh, it's kind of looking in the background at the moment. Uh, we received a grant from the local highway technical assistance council, also known as LTAC, uh, to do, uh, seventy-five thousand dollars for a transportation master plan. Uh, we hired Forestry and Associates to do the most of the work on that. They're our consultant. Uh, they were out in November, uh, collecting data on road conditions and sidewalk conditions and stop sign locations and speed limit, and all our signs and what kind of posts they're on and how tall those posts are, and they're all a little bit plain. Um, you know, that sort of thing. Uh, and so then, uh, this spring and summer, we're gonna be, it's public outreach, gonna assemble a advisory committee on that process, uh, and it should be getting, uh, written and adopted. We're aiming for spring or summer of twenty twenty-six, so.
Can you clarify just for us, um, kind of the value of having a transportation master plan?
Um, yeah, so I mean, we are expecting growth, we have maintenance needs, we have a lot of deferred maintenance, all that. Um, right now, we don't have great data on what those things are and what we need to be prioritizing and anticipating in the future. Uh, so having a transportation plan that has all that data and has some expert guidance on what we should be, uh, focusing on as far as our next initial investments and, um, improving, uh, bike competitive, uh, facilities and safety, uh, also. And, um, all those things are kind of, kind of come into it. And it helps us make decisions on budgeting and land use and all sorts of things in the future.
It's also required for a lot of grants.
Yeah, it helps us lotterie general grant.
And I might. And I might have said, when do we expect the completion of that?
Uh, in summer of twenty twenty-six. Twenty twenty-six.
Twenty twenty-six? The, the survey to be completed?
No, the.
Your plan.
The plan, the plan to be adopted.
The plan to be adopted, got it.
There was one done a number of years ago.
I think two thousand.
Well, we do a lot of plans and then we don't do anything. We like to spend money.
I respect that. I just was wondering if you are using any of that, you know, how, I mean, obviously using any of that as a reference.
Yep, the consultants have been provided with that information. It's kind of the baseline of this is what we had adopted and had implemented out of that plan and then kind of, yeah.
How often are transportation plans um, updated? Cause we've talked about like how often law plans should be updated. So how often are transportation plans updated?
Uh, guys, it's a word, five, ten years.
Does that include the highway? I mean, I know it's sort of ITV's highway.
Uh, I keep, you know, it's, it kind of falls into a special category, but yeah, it is within city limits. It is transportation infrastructure that we use and need, and so it is part of.
Anything from previous councils um, that you feel from years past that I, we might have missed, kind of touching on in twenty twenty-four achievements, please let's add to the category?
Community events in Bellevue and then also thanks to Tammy and the crisis hotline and the neighbors helping neighbors because her organization helped fund those. So she partnered with myself and the events committee, like we created an events committee, part of the library to, cause that was the one thing I, when I was campaigning the previous fall, was hearing from so many people, they're looking for more ways to connect their community that aren't just going to a restaurant or a bar. Um, so like partnering for the ERC and having, having the cleanup, but having a ban and partnering with the county to you know, waive those fees. Um, I actually, yeah, need to follow up with them because I was hoping for this year's cleanup to do a bigger um, impact in removing a lot more items, but to coordinate with that. So I think like to continue with events within our community, I think has been really important. And um, I've heard so many people just, or, or also like the turnout for the Christmas tree lighting this year. I feel like it was double from last year, which was amazing from like the collaboration with social media and people putting it out there and everybody had a great time.
Yeah.
You know, some lighting and music speaker things to work on, but other than that, it was it was great.
Even that Halloween. All that, yeah, all the snow. And we're, we, yeah, there were close to two hundred people that came out.
Yeah, that was the first time I've seen almost, yeah, it was, it was really full. That was the other thing too, like giving everybody to come out and like yeah, people wanting to stay in Bellevue. And that's the thing that I heard is like, I don't wanna go north anymore. I wanna stay in my community, but there's not anything happening in my community. And so just seeing everybody there was great.
I gave away almost two hundred hot dogs as the only reason I know.
I won.
I know you did.
In your boot?
You did, and I made criteria about.
Yeah, that was great. Diane, anything you wanna add to twenty twenty-four?
Uh, I, I think you guys have covered all of it.
Wonderful.
Oh, also just housing and exploring those conversations and people being open to exploring, exploring what the future of housing looks, looks like. I think that was just very important for our community and being part of the conversation with the rest of the valley. I think that was important. Establishing relationships, right? Because valleywide, I feel like we all, all need to start leaning on each other. Um, and communicating, so I think that was.
I think that's great, yeah. And I think to piggyback on that, um, more representation of Bellevue at the table and a lot of different valleywide meetings, um, and kind of committees. I just think Bellevue representation in twenty twenty-four um, increased through um, previous mayor and council members kind of and, and staff stepping into a space of being at the table much more often than we've seen in the past. And that'll be hopefully, you know, as we go into our twenty twenty-five focus areas, um, continuing to make sure Bellevue has a seat at the table, so.
How does that work? I mean, just, uh, I'm interested and you go and we're all interested, we notice it and we all go or?
Well, often it's um, responding to an invitation that you're already receiving and showing up. You know, just kind of being present at the meetings, you know, we're part of a resort cities coalition and always having a representative in the meetings there, um, you know, housing authority meetings, having some of that.
For the county housing authorities, so.
Yeah, so that's, you know, as we progress into the twenty twenty-five focus area, um, a lot of that will be, once we identify our priorities, understanding what internal committees we have here within the city and then external representation opportunities we have valleywide and kind of who within our um, representative team will represent Bellevue up those things, so.
How about the airport?
That can be not part of the twenty twenty-five focus discussion, yeah.
So.
Um, I will wrap up that little section B unless Brian had anything else to add to that. Um, how's everyone feeling? Does anyone need to stretch back and break, get a little coffee? Okay, get some water. Okay, perfect.
There's the water thing down there too, Tim.
Tom in the audience, Tom, hi. Please also feel free to have coffee or snacks if you need. They're not exclusive.
You may as well check my phone.
No.
Are you a banana or, or?
I'm, I'm high in it, I'm there. Brian, do you wanna kind of kick us off explaining kind of our process today?
Yeah, uh, so what we're gonna do, you've all got sticky notes in front of you, uh.
Diane, I can be your um, liaison. Oh, you got some of this. A sticky proxy. I can be your sticky proxy too. I can write things for ya.
Uh, so we're gonna just write down uh, what things we wanna work, prioritize as far as getting started or completed in twenty twenty-five, you know, nothing government ever gets done in the year. So you know, all these things are gonna go longer than twenty twenty-five. Don't be afraid to kind of say, I wanna get this ball rolling. Uh, but just, yeah. Just kind of go rapid fire, write down what you wanna do.
Um, what we wanna do individually or as a group?
As the city government, as the community.
Okay.
You know, and then uh, we're gonna take a couple of minutes. I'm gonna rapidly rearrange them into a bunch of different categories, themes. Um, if we have more than six, I'll ask you guys to kind of pare down a little bit, uh, but hope we get, end goal is to get to six, cause there are six council members. Uh, and then I will take that kind of write up an overview for the uh, next council meeting of what we went through, uh, what the goals are. And uh, each of you is gonna kind of be a champion for each one of these theme areas and I'm gonna find you some things to keep you entertained with uh, committees and groups and regional partnerships and that sort of thing.
Something that might be valuable too, tell me Brian, if you grew this as kind of, if you identified, do you feel like it's a short, mid, or long-term?
Yeah, I think that.
You can kind of, kind of annotate that too, if it feels like it's kind of what I call sometimes the low hanging fruit or things you can tackle pretty quickly, if it's kind of a, a mid-range goal, um, and or kind of something you see long-term like brains that are kind of flows maybe into next year or might take a little time, but we wanna get started this year. Um, and this can also even, you know, if you've got things that's gotten them down.
Idea per.
Yeah, yeah. And we can also discuss them as we're writing. You know, this is, you know, a collaborative exercise here, so.
Is this based on a common mission statement or we're making our own mission statement?
We are coming together for this year to.
To create the mission, okay, got it.
So I think, I mean, the intention here is to set a focus for this year, um, which will then allow us to.
Make a mission.
Statement, achieve those kind of collective goals, but I think it's, you know, we're all different elected officials and representatives, a bunch of representatives coming together with ideas from within our community, kind of to bring to the table here for the city of Bellevue.
And you said these are, how define the focus areas? Conceptually or as?
Um, you can be as precise or broad as you want. I'm gonna kind of polish it down either direction.
Okay.
Diane, do you wanna also, you can also text me and you can tell me and I can write on.
Okay, I, yeah, I, I mean, I do have a couple and I'm not quite sure how to do a virtual sticky note. Um, so, um, do you, do you want me to go ahead and state? Or I'll, I'll text you.
Yeah, or, or text, I mean.
Put it in the thing, in the chat.
Is there where you do it in the chat?
And we can capture.
Do we have any kind of like?
I think the chats are not paying attention.
We were, we also have a, a, you know, we could pull up a note on there. And then I think it'd be nice to go through and.
Yeah.
Often how do you kind of explain your why too? So this is just a little bit of a brain dump real quick. We'll start talking through them and then as you're discussing, Brian can categorize.
And seven.
That's, that's a good start.
This is so fun and so private.
There's some of them, you know, they kind of.
Yeah.
Be a little dotted up that way. I can't remember better what I was talking about.
I just decided to bring. I don't do, I'll do more sticky note for projects in the future.
Well, you know.
Yeah, colorblind.
I really wish I was in the room for this exercise. I just want you guys to know that.
Yes, I know, I, I'm sorry.
That's, that's okay.
Okay, how are we, how are we feeling, you guys?
Definitely with.
Right, enough to get, kind of get started discussing. Tell me, what time are you doing, okay?
I'm okay.
All right. Wait for Jessica to get back from the bathroom and then we can start chatting through them all. Where do you want a sticky note?
What's that?
Which side?
Uh, I think it'll be here, I'll follow you.
Okay, perfect. I'll start us off with one of Diane's. I think maybe just go around one by one-ish. Okay. So first one, this is from you Diane, if you wanna chime in, please do. Um, downtown revitalization. Begin process to vacate some of the dead-end streets on west side of Main Street.
Important community workforce housing number one.
If you have any questions as to someone's why, please feel free to directly ask if, you know, we can have.
Me?
Yep.
Uh, no prescriptive transfer of wealth between residents.
Wanna?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we should not have policies that um, codify a transfer of wealth between residents. Anything, you, you can't be taking from this group to subsidize another group, right?
Have you seen that play out to date? Have you?
It's, it's all up and down the valley, right? It's whenever you take from the services or the fund, the money that is there that has been gathered, assets of a community that is for services for all the residents. And then you take some of that and service a particular group exclusively, a particular need exclusively without showing benefit to all the residents. So, so long as you can show benefit, sorry.
Do, do you have a specific example?
Um, I could absolutely, but I would have to provide you the financials. But then example would be, you make a choice and you say, we're gonna do the, and we'll just use Main Street because we've been talking about it, but it, it applies to anything. Or you could say um, you know, nobody uses Pine Street, but we, we were to pave Pine Street and the only group that benefits are the people that live on Pine Street because nobody else uses that street, say. Then you've taken the assets of the community and used them to service uh, exclusively a particular, particular group. And there, and when you do the analysis, you can't show how it would benefit the people in Chanterell, how it would benefit all these other members of the community. You have to have an equal um, benefit across residents.
So you're saying if we do have an example of that transfer of wealth in your community from one group to the other. Big set of, um, because I think that's in a, in a broad community sense, hard to kind of put a squash on. There's some financial backing or data to rationalize the why.
Exactly, it's just a method all ins- ensuring we have a process that looks, that it says that we have integrity in this process and we're not, we're not seeking to redistribute wealth.
Is there a way in which we could kind of write it that, that would be more po- policy or process based?
Uh, yeah, oh, absolutely.
To kind of say, uh, you know, how do we, uh?
It's a small sticky and prescriptive. The script is, has a lot of words in this.
Yeah, yeah, so.
To ensure.
Yeah.
Yeah, and speak, like if we're gonna be speaking to the general public, and I don't mean this in any way. Cause I could use terminology that is not relevant to what you guys are understanding, right? Because it's what I do in my business. But if we're gonna speak to the general public, we should be speaking more in general terms so that it doesn't look like we're driving down a lane that no one else will.
I agree, and if Brian had given me a bigger paper. I could have really gone to town.
As you hear, you know, actual tangible things, achievable concept.
Oh, absolutely. I thought we were kind of at, but I maybe went the wrong way.
That's, that's great, that's why we're discussing it.
Okay.
Yeah, just doing a little revision that makes it just slightly more of a tangible strategy.
Yeah, ensure.
Ensure all residents benefit equally from decisions.
From decisions and our services.
Yeah.
Tammy?
Oh, gosh. Prioritize, and, and I may say things that I'm not sure where we are, so I put that little asterisk. Um, prioritize negotiations and plannings with our ACI.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Diane, did you hear that?
Is that this up here?
I, I didn't. Tammy, could you repeat that for me?
Could somebody else repeat?
Yeah, no, I can say it louder. Prioritize, um, planning and negotiations around our ACI.
Take it, Justin chatting with you.
Well, it only took us twenty years to get it, uh, to get it established. So that it, that's a, a process that I definitely think we need to follow because we did put a lot of time and effort into getting an ACI established.
And I think those updates will come from, um, our community development department. And you will see more, uh, information about that and we'll have, you know, either staff updates or agenda items that will kind of come this year in regards to that.
Just another table to get back at.
Yeah.
But I would say this is, is short term maybe, but this sewer, a fully functioning sewer plant.
Well, maybe we could throw in like when we have similar stickies, we could just like pile them on. Oh, now I gotta put my glasses on. And we did, should we all just have like a, well, that was.
I made you feel that there's something that ties into that.
No, I have the same, I just.
Create the actual plan for the rebuild of the.
So basically a project plan for getting that sewer water, or the water, sorry, sewer plan back online.
Well, and now where are we? Yes.
And then what would, what was your say?
Mine says, like I always say, clean, safe, reliable, sustainable, affordable sewer services.
All those words are on there, buddy.
But I, you know, I have a whole deck if you wanna know all my.
Is that more of the long term? That's more of a long term sewer plant.
I think I would categorize the, the plan, um, kind of the project management plan being in short term.
Yeah.
And then implementation, implementation based on that being, you know, some short, some mid and some long range.
Yeah.
So kind of, but communicating what the plan is. And, uh, you know, communicating to the staff, the council and the citizens and then having implementation timeline. Because there could be elements that are long term and there could be in a little more short and mid. I think that after this electrical work, it should reveal, um, some more information for us on what that timeline.
But we also need to see the plan of which that's a part of currently, right? How did you get to the, the belief system that rebuilding the sewer was? And I'm not saying it's wrong, but how was it established that this path was the, was the right path? Right? That's all. So I, we rebuild exactly what's there. How is that the best? Choice? How is that determined? And is it still the path that should be, should be followed based on new management of that? Department, does that make sense? Like, how did you even decide that getting the, undertaking this project was and to, for the purpose of rebuilding what we already have, was more with a better plan than a different technology or a different opportunity? Would like to know what the alternatives that were evaluated before this was pursued.
Um, I think, yeah, I mean, I can touch on that a little bit, though I think we are.
Well, you don't have to right now. I just love the over, the thinking, like when we delve into these things.
Yeah, I think, you know, acknowledging that the sewer plant has been down from a catastrophic failure in, uh, since March of twenty twenty-three and poor management and, um, utilizing the tools available to us via a, uh, insurance claim to get the plant back and operational, so we're not relying on a lagoon system that was never intended to be relied on for this duration of time. Um, and getting this back to, uh, operational plan that even if we agree or don't agree the way it was designed many years ago and engineered, might not be the best for us moving forward. Um, right now getting that operational and then looking at what the reengineering might look like down the line, but, um, you know, moving away from kind of what was supposed to be a secondary system back into our primary system that existed, but all, you know, open to further discussion on those, but I think prioritizing, you know, a functioning service over the perfect service right now. Um, it is the priority.
And I'm, so I'm not trying to, I, I'm just saying, these are the topics because you could say as we examine addition, we examine our asset management and we find that, uh, you know, I think there's a great water system down there. I don't know if that, I know it's been held for years. He, that, Bryce and I won't let the water out. Was that something that was revenue generating for us? Are there gray water revenue generating opportunities down there? I just mean in the context of the, all of our asset management and understanding how it, it fits in, that's.
And I think having, um, adequate representation within the department and, uh, kind of, uh, a reliable point person to take on this planning.
Yes.
With us within the city, um, clear thoughtful explanations. Um, and kind of, you know, moving into, delving more into that project. I think we can start to, um, kind of, as a council and a community, start to require a little bit more information and dialogue around that.
Which I know you already are, so it's.
That's a great, you know, it's a great short, mid and long term. Right there, because it's one of our core, you know, core services as a city. So it has to be.
And that was a big investment. That's a, that is a big investment.
Yes.
Yeah, so there's obviously a budgetary, sort of short, medium and long term budgetary concept that's there too.
Do you wanna call in, Jessica?
Yeah, drivable, walkable, save Main Street.
Diane, have one, um, relocate the welcome to Bellevue sign. Diane, do you wanna touch on that? You're muted.
Sorry. Um, this was one of the things that we talked about in our Bura meeting, um, on, uh, what day was that, Brian? Tuesday? Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, and, uh, I mean, everybody knows that sign is horribly located. Um, it, it used to live, uh, on the other side of the highway, um, right next to, uh, Sweets Septic. Company and, um, what a, what a welcoming first business. Um, and so, uh, I think that there's an opportunity for us to find, um, a better location for that sign or, uh, a new sign altogether. Apparently, um, Jamie Sluter did some work. Looking into, into our current sign and, and it's, it's falling apart. Um, and decaying, and so, uh, I think, um, you know, there's, there's a, an opportunity out there for us to maybe do a, uh, a call for artists to design a new, um, welcome to Bellevue sign for us and then, you know, find a, a good location for it to be located. And I think Bura, it sounded to me like they were, uh, interested in, in some funding for that project, if not all of it.
And have it made out of metal so that it doesn't decay as much.
Right, or if it rests, then it looks even better as it ages.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The Sage School has a gorgeous sign that's metal works on. Emergency preparedness.
Metal sign, the Bellevue Cemetery is a nice metal sign.
And, um, Suzanne just added emergency preparedness. So that.
Uh, I think we all know that California is, um, currently the, um, poster child for systemic failure as well and, and what can happen on top of the extraordinary power of nature. We had the fire roaring up through the triangle last year and almost down into Haley. And, um, I think that we're ill-prepared to deal with something catastrophic like that. Not just as one of the primary egresses from the valley, right? But also to ensure that the, the trials and tribulations that are now facing those communities in the aftermath. There are postings on Nextdoor, there are articles throughout the various major papers about people without jobs now, right? And there is no way for them to recover. And, you know, they're gonna have to move and that's fine, that's not, but if you're a city that's prepared, um, then perhaps we've made choices that assured that, um, that our community had appropriate fire, um, protections that our people are prepared through our projects to, to know where they will go if they're burned out. To avoid situations like the Palisades and those areas are having of people armed on their property because there's been such a systemic um, failure and the looting is so extraordinary. And so that type of preparation through our departments to, um, make sure that we have a plan and that we would be able to begin rebuilding immediately and have a plan for our folks so they know they would stay, that they could stay, that they could rebuild. Or they'd already decided to leave and it wasn't a question.
Hi, sorry, I, I thought about emergency preparedness, um, coming into this meeting as well and, um, thinking about how, uh, you know, kind of exclusive city of Bellevue concept and plan, but I also think it's a great, uh, countywide initiative as well for, um, like county and community collaboration because of, um, you know, potential sharing of services, uh, collaboration, things like that.
I agree, but if I lived here, I'd wanna be number one in my community. I wanna make sure I get out before, I wanna make sure. I'm just saying.
Yes, I, I, and what my statement there is Bellevue centric as well as county collaboration. Yeah.
So last year, I think, yeah, so last year I was reading that the fire started in Idaho. Like two hundred and something were all man caused. And so, right, so it's like, okay, so it's education, so I, I think it's preventative and creating a plan, but also like accountability and education about what we're doing in our community. Like, it blows me away that we allow fireworks anywhere around here. All it takes is the cottonwoods and we're up, or just like responsible gun ownership and when they're out shooting. I mean, all the things, you know, tying up your chain when you're going camping, like what it really means smoldering your logs and what that looks like. There's not a visual appeal of like, a lot of people just really don't know what they should be doing too. I, I know that one was like lightning, but you know, that one back there was.
I would, I'm gonna ask you to write it on your sticky note, a little bit of that, like community, either accountability, education, just.
Public service announcements. Because they do a lot of, of those reminders and with the Rangers are always up like, uh, um, Perkins and all that going around and we've put out other people's fires that are up there and leave without, so there's no doubt.
And that, there's a little bit of, you know, cross collaboration too with, you know, tools, tools and education information that might already be out there and just kind of how can we, um, you know, bringing that together in, uh, kind of a tangible way for our citizens. Is it newsletter? Is it social media? Is it, um, you know, let's go into our yearly timeline of reminders of, you know, pertinent information we want to communicate to our citizens.
Right, we're working with the chamber and putting out for their visitors coming to town and like that this is what you should know when you're out.
Tammy, yeah, what's wrong?
Um, review opportunities to increase revenue for the city.
Greatness, great. Diane, she had said review opportunities to increase revenue for the city.
Here's my sticky note. Discuss the same thing.
New revenue streams. New revenue streams, exploring revenue. Can we think a little bit about what that looks like on how you'd like to explore new revenue streams?
I guess ideally, I'm not sure about, and there are opportunities for new revenue streams. But I'm interested in also looking at how how we can increase our, our, really our levy rate, or how we can increase our general, general fund. Not just try to add more specific things, but how we can look at if we're, if we're gonna prioritize these things and we're gonna say we're prioritizing the city. I mean, it's an investment, not just from us, it's an investment from the city. When people move here or live here, they expect a certain level of service, right? And, and it's an investment. And so how can we, how can we, um, get a campaign going that as we're building the trust in the community and what we're able to accomplish? That we can't do it without appropriate revenues, like we want our speech better, we want these things better. But that we have to have, it, it's not free for anybody. And so how do we, how do we get the message out that, that we need to increase our revenue streams?
And so one, one priority that I wanted to bring was, um, looking at current revenue, um, we've talked a lot about assessing fees, Brian and I, um, just kind of talked about that again this year going into, you know, before our net budget season, actually having that fee, um, assessment done between all departments. So looking at the efficiency of our current revenue, um, you know, making sure that our fees are accurate for the labor that it is taking to, you know, rent the park out, things like that. So strategy for me, um, focusing on the internal revenue, that's, you know, already established. And making sure, making sure that it, it is correct, it is in line with what we need to be charging. Um, so kind of current revenue and then hearing from you guys, other potential revenues. Um, you know, that might be assessing, looking at lot taxes, um, other creative kind of paths we could go down. Um, if there's any, you know, more focused ideas on that and how we can apply that, um, into our budgetary planning, yearly planning. Kind of, how, how we could explore that a little bit further.
Well, I, looking at, sorry, looking at different businesses, like looking at what different businesses bring in year revenue and what we want to attract in the bigger picture, right? Like what that looks like, I mean, there's not a space at all for any, um, people who work in tech in this valley, really. In collaboration, there used to be some, a space up north, but that, I forget what it was called.
That's such a renovation.
Yes, yes, but like, you know, something, there are people who work in that space, but also like, I don't know, I see that being.
Come to my house. Clean my garage up for you.
I mean, my, well, you know.
No.
My husband and like certain friends, I'm hearing in the community, there is this, there is a want and need, but also like from our, um, from our younger folks of wanting to get into that type of industry that there's nothing, right? Like the spaces during their programs, but thinking about like, things that aren't necessarily going to be hard on impact of like a lot of vehicles going in and out, but a space within Bellevue that could generate revenue.
To clarify, are you feeling that that's a city led thing or something you'd like to encourage for private business?
Maybe something to encourage for private business.
Um, I would like to pause it a couple things, but the first one is that I actually, and, um, I believe the mayor's. And I would like to posit a couple things, but the first one is that I actually, and, um, I believe the mayor's actually one of the leading drivers on this, but with some hopefully upcoming changes with work over at the library, um, and Kristen's phenomenal efforts over there, you know, there's already something called Tech Hub there that she got grants from and that we started early last, you know, at the beginning of last year, but she with some new, with some new possibilities that have been introduced with the things people have voted for, with the technology, with the new newsletter, with the new website and things like that. Um, there are now going to be internship opportunities um, in that particular, that's technology-based, that's looking, she's already got interns and things like that over there, so.
Right.
In that interest, there, there's something nascent coming, but what I would get back to about the revenue strategy, and I would ask us all to be considerate of, is that we charge best-in-class prices for our sewer and our water, really. We're not, we are highest, they, as, as somebody colorfully, colorfully stated during the campaigning of all of us, we're the most expensive place in Idaho to take a poop, right? So we charge best-in-class already and we deliver substandard services. And so it's really hard to go to a community and say, hey, you need to pay more, I think we need to clean some house before we can look to generate more revenue from an already substandard, um, performance. Because to me, the mission statement is to deliver clean, reliable, safe, timely, um, services to the residents. And we're not doing it. And also affordable, excuse me, that's a key component, so I understand your point, and so we, and yet we do need additional funds to do these things. Well, there have been missed steps, it doesn't matter how they came about, that we have to rectify. So when we look at revenue strategy, we look at developing new revenue streams, right? We look at maximizing existing revenues, but we also have to look at better spending, um, within the city. There's money spent on kind of pie in the sky, talk about, and I believe now with Brian here, these, and even with the software we're now implementing, Cassell has been implemented, but it was paid four years ago and nothing happened. That's not a good use of that money, if you just, even if you just deposited it in a high-yield savings, we would have made money instead of wasted money like that, right? Then, right, so those types of choices, and when you look at, um, some of the resident, or the revenue streams or ideas, we're assessing our current assets, right? We talked briefly about the sewer. It is a gray water system, I don't know the value of that, but that water must have value to somebody, I don't know if bringing that back online offers, um, a new opportunity. When you talk about new ideas, you know, we love Main Street and we're all trying to figure out, including multi-dwelling, what have you, but they're part of a, of a bigger picture and is it possible that Bellevue becomes more of a cash-friendly Main Street? And that we go and cherry pick restaurants like that sister, so we can finally have barbecue down here, that, you know, and the, but in doing so, Bellevue owns an ATM network and we execute, and all of the businesses down here are on the Bellevue ATM network and people withdraw cash and it's for a lesser fee, like concepts like that, whether the, the dump up in, um, Haley will be full in about a decade. Is, is, should we be considering that asset out there as a potential dump and revenue stream? We've talked.
You mentioned water back, excuse me, water back online.
The gray water system, we have gray water at the sewer and it's been held for years, I think.
It's not fresh water.
No, no, it's the gray water, but it's used for watering and it's, and it's permitted in Bellevue and the water thing for gray water residentially is a, is a topic I associate with our sustainability of, of our residential water system. I'm sorry.
No, I just wanna make sure to, I appreciate, I know, well, sewer, water and sewer are proprietary. So they are not general fund revenue streams. It's specific, it's charged, what we charge is based on what it costs to operate, like in, in essence, that's how that, that works, specific to water and sewer. When I was, when I was speaking, sorry, going too fast. I'm speaking more on the general fund side. Like to clarify that point, I'm speaking more on the general fund side that funds the rest of our operations, our streets, our police, our fire, our administration, everything else. Um, and as far as, just to spec, be specific, the gray water, we have a contract with Dan Brown and that was already put in place because of everything that, that was done. But the level that we produce out of our wastewater treatment plant cannot just be, it has to be treated at a higher level to be able to apply it anywhere else. So at the moment, our wastewater is being properly dispensed the way we have contracted. So it's not, we can't, we don't have an opportunity at this time to do anything else with it, because we're in a contract to allow Dan Brown to use it on his property in the summer. I mean, obviously during the winter, we store it, that's, that is how it's done, that's what rapid infiltration basins, that's how those lagoon systems are set up to operate.
Currently.
Yes, and, and, but I mean, that's the contract, and then again, even the, um, bio-membrane reactor plant, the level that we paid for and treated at is not able to be applied any other way at this time. To the point of re-establishing it, and this is in general sense, I don't have, to the point of re-establishing the bio-membrane reactor plant to operate at the level that it was meant to, right? It still is applied, is only, can only be either applied to Dan Brown's property, which again, we've got the, where we're at, that's the contract. Or we, from there, we could increase the treatment, the level of treatment that we, um, use down there at the, the plant, to be able to then in the future look at renegotiating uh, with, let's say, clear water landscaping, the, the plant, something like that down there. But at this time, like, I guess what I would caution is to try to propose things or say things that aren't, like, aren't really vetted all the way through. It's not, those aren't viable things for us to consider. And, and it's important when we consider revenue, that we are very clear on what water and wastewater is versus general fund, because the general public mostly, they don't, they still don't understand that. So the more we just try to mesh it all together, the more confused we make the general public, and I just am sharing that, right?
Yeah, and I guess I would disagree, right, because to me, and I, I would love to see a contrary definition, because this is a statement that is broadly using a, a cross, across all levels of government, but is the job of government to provide timely, reliable, to provide services to the residents, that's what we're elected to do, they don't care uh, which fund it's coming from, our delivery of service of roads, of sewer, of water is substandard across all of them, and that's all I'm trying to draw our attention to.
But I think Tammy is making a valid point, but the delineation of when you're speaking about revenue or thinking, thinking about revenue streams or, you know, the way that things are charged and paid for and costed, we do very much have to delineate between the general fund and the water and sewer funds. Um, because there is legality around, quite, quite a lot of legality around, um, the water and sewer. But I do think the part of the strategic planning and part of, you know, us discussing this and being representatives of the city is also getting clarification at this table of, um, you know, how we are communicating within city meetings, within city discussions, and then how that trickles out to how we're communicating with the community. So while this is group thinking and discussion, it is a learning opportunity as well for, you know, incumbent council members and new council members to, you know, start changing the dialogue so that we are properly communicating with amongst each other and with our citizens, so we can start to, you know, clarify, um, some of these discussions, and so while, yes, as elected, you know, officials as a city supplying those services, um, you know, at, at a level at which we are charging for them. So part of the, the fee assessments, um, of course, looking at the general fund permits fees like that, but, um, in process already in the Public Works Department, just so you know, for strategic planning is, um, doing a, uh, an audit of the water and sewer fees at this time before we go into the next budgeting cycle, is already on the list for the Public Works Department. So we are working on that at this time, um, and just to kind of put a pause on this discussion real quick, one of the outcomes after this discussion will be department head work plans, um, is the next phase from this. So kind of taking some of our strategic plans, our sick topics and giving guidance to staff where we're headed, and then also having staff come back with department head work plans for this year. So this, this is a great kind of tie-in to look at, um, you know, what does that water and sewer plan look like, it does, you know, include an audit already for those water and sewer fees being currently charged and what we will need to charge, uh, moving into the next budget cycle. So going back to, um, looking at, let's kind of focus on revenue for the general fund at this time, because that's the relevant aspect of where revenue discussion can happen. Um, so from what I'm hearing from the group is, uh, kind of the already established revenue streams, uh, creating, you know, more clarity on, um, the adequate, you know, exit, what those already are. Um, and then kind of let's go back to how we can explore other revenue streams and what that looks like from a planning level. So, um, is that a workshop? Is that, um, individual council presentation of ideas to myself or department heads, um, how would you like to kind of facilitate the exploration of revenue streams in a short and mid and long-term kind of range perspective, that's what, that's what I'd like to get clarity from council front?
And for each department, we should know all the revenue streams.
I would say maybe that is a, is a separate session, um, only because I don't know, you know, the time, time this morning, but, um, and, and obviously there are legal consequences, you know, restrictions on what you can and can't do, and it'd be interesting to learn more about you know, what the parameters are there, but, uh.
Yeah, it would be great to see just different, like with different businesses, the taxable income, right, that we would get as a city from, um, if we put in another housing development to, if we need an apartment building, the taxable income on that, or just understanding the scope of like, what is going to weigh on our environment, but also what brings them money, like just understanding like, okay, we need money, but also like, infrastructurally, like how much would that cost if we do this, but if we, yeah.
So what I'm hearing is a potential like revenue workshop?
Yeah.
Or, you know, revenue group thing, kind of.
So I think what might be productive would be to do like a training session on budget basics, how things work. And then you guys come back at the, at another workshop with, now that you know the parameters, you know your confines.
Great.
Yeah, and this feels kind of, you know, when you look at kind of the timeline of the year before we go into the budgeting season. So this is a, a pre, you know, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget, um, discussion, that way we could um, kind of have those robust discussions before we go into discussing what the next budget looks like.
The area of city, that's for your. Excuse me, the Idaho Association of Cities has an excellent, um, budget workshop program.
And, and they will bring people here to help you in that, your own workshop. With legal people and infrastructure people.
Yeah.
Very, they have great service.
Members, we are, yeah. We're, we'll be there next week, yeah, so I think, you know, that is something that we already utilize within kind of our information, and that's a great idea of, you know, adding that into that training, budgeting kind of basics, um, I think that's, that's a great way to focus the revenue discussion, um, and, and in my opinion, that's looking at alternative, um, revenue services outside, or options outside of what we already have existing, so.
Okay.
Uh, does the city employ anybody to, is there specific grant writing and jobs to seek out grants and buy grants and stuff like that?
We had a meeting yesterday with the Frontier Community, something around the football, that's where the regional development organization, uh, one services they provide is grant writing, writing and grant assistance.
And I specifically think of somebody that's job is to just keep their eye out for grants.
Yeah, so with a simple, with a membership, you know, we're kind of within that network. Um, but, yeah, we had a really quite successful meeting with them yesterday around a lot of information about, um, it was more focused on community and economic development grants.
But no, there is no one hired here specifically to be going out like that short.
I do as an occasional sort of like that. Yeah, that kind of falls on you a little bit.
Yeah. Okay, Tom.
I mean, this is one that maybe gets added to your comments about the Main Street sort of safety. And I, and I, I think that's a little broader, my perspective. It maybe it's kind of safe routes to school, or it's safe routes to the bike path from, you know, Broadford Grove, for example, or down Broadford Grove, I see a lot of traffic at that intersection. Um, and so that's, there's a lot of pedestrian there, I also see a lot of pedestrian traffic kind of up at Spruce Street. And think, oh yeah, they could get from Main Street to the bike path, that just gets them off Main Street, so that's, um, kind of a core area or similar.
I have one to add on to yours, the sidewalks for growing communities.
Yeah, so, so, and, and I guess, uh, kind of related to that, um, the,
some years ago, there was a grant that I thought was issued to the city of Bellevue for work on Pine Street. And I, and it seemed a little unfortunate to me that it was exclusive to Pine Street, um, instead of maybe the first block of every street or something, you know, I mean, some alternative, but does anyone know anything about that?
We didn't get the grant, they applied for it, but in the, I, in the transportation, uh, if, if we didn't prioritize, we, we didn't get to be prioritized, so we didn't get the grant. They did work, put it together, and because Pine Street is the main collector street in the, the whole city, like people will drive, they did a survey and people will drive from three, I watched it yesterday, but people drive from other streets to Pine, to come down Pine, to the city. So it's one of the main, it is the main collector, plus it goes all the way out. They named three other, I forget what other. Yeah.
And there's one that was coming down Elm Street, associated with Greyhorn.
But, yeah, it's collectors, but the main collector was Pine Street, and that's why that one was delineated to be, to receive the funds. But it was part of the bigger transportation plan, it wasn't just, oh, all the people on Pine Street are gonna benefit. It was part of the bigger plan that this is, this what was where we could get the grant for. But, but because of our lack of having a, a full transportation plan and, and other things in place, we didn't, when ITD prioritizes it, it didn't, we didn't.
I also.
Thank you for the next council meeting.
But there was also another, I, the, uh, Urban Renewal District, and there was work planned specifically to your point, to Tom, and what you guys are saying for the Broadford Road.
Yeah, like a walk-in.
Yep, especially because of the, the, that was a big thing too, especially because of the mobile home parks down there. And so that, that's what I put on here, like kind of, we prioritize what, what our borough are aligning them with what we need for the city to provide great services to the city.
Yeah, I think that, like, thinking about the growing and like people using transportation or making it more walkable, or like as the community is growing, you know, having the main, you know, tiny elm sidewalks all the way straight down, so there's safe, walkable, and for people to use transportation, because why would they use transportation if they can't walk to transportation? Or I know it's harder in the winters, but, um, if we're thinking about and thinking about ridership, or if we're thinking about that path, like, and especially, yeah, I mean, having kids walking around on a bunch of streets that are, there's no sidewalks or safe, and, and the whole idea is like, oh, there's never been sidewalks in Idaho, and I'm like, okay, but we are growing population with more cars on the road, like, we're just waiting for a, a a vitality, and then that will, that will change really quick, it'd be nice to be ahead of that.
The transportation plan will, will encourage that.
Great, great.
What, what's hop around?
We have the water one up there already, you know.
Yeah.
Clean, safe, reliable, sustainable, affordable, usable, as in pressure water. Right, services, I mean, I mean, that's my dog, what are our services?
We'll kind of flush them out of the category then.
Um, long-term trash bowls that are affordable, there is, I did a kind of inventory. And walked the streets with the county commissioner back. October, November, but um, you know, people are going to get dumpsters because their weekly trash. Service or their monthly bill is more expensive than having a dumpster at their house. Which is also an issue if we have bears in our community.
And rats is a big problem for the folks by the park with those dumpsters.
Right, so it's like, um, so figuring out how we actually, you know, if we take. If we create a plan, um, where we are with just our trash and consumption in our valley. And if we don't start recycling more, what that's going to look like for our carbon footprint, making another landfill is just going to increase our. Our CO2, so coming up with, I think collaborating, working with the county. Atkinson Building Materials Thrift in like, in the city Bellevue collaboration, like how we, how we start recycling. And what's actually like looking into um, what those opportunities are, there are opportunities and we could get funding for it. But we have to kind of figure out plan to pay. The way on that, so I'm interested in what we want with that.
Just as I'm inside, as the, as. Um, the building material thrift, but even in the bigger picture, there is, there is the five feet can. And I've been an active member of it and they, their, their mission objective really is looking at the circular economy for the most part. Which is inclusive of environmental impact and ecological.
And Bellevue's part of that, we signed on to that last year, so it's more like, okay, if we're part of it. How, what are we implementing and how are we being part of that solution, so, yeah.
It's just out of curiosity, because I've been talking to some folks about, and actually we contacted one of the senators about residential gray water. Is that part of this initiative as well when you talk about the environmental? Are they working on that as well, do you know? Residential use gray water systems?
Um.
I was just curious if you.
I'm trying to remember.
I don't know.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I don't recall what other components there.
Tom?
Um. Speaking of water, um. Water meters, and I know that's maybe eminent or, but um, I'd say water meters are a priority. And, and then maybe this is an opportunity to kind of talk about sort of strategic plans a little more generally is, so the short term is water meters, uh, uh, operational. Um, the medium term is kind of water conservation, right, that's apparently the point. Um, and then the even longer term goal, which others would put into would be sustainability and that's trash and that's other things. But just sort of a general strategic plan category, long-term of being sustainable. So that kind of maybe is what I view as kind of the three categories of a strategic plan. Um, but the focus in the immediate term is on water.
Yeah, I also want to tie on to that with you, Tom, is like future building and how like the requirements and how people. Uh, build for landscaping and conserving water, because I don't think large lawns are. In our future, if we're wanting to keep our water like requirements, I think it's important for like zero speaking and how you do that. Because the amount of water lawns use, like, that's our drinking water.
We want to add for our future building, it sounds like with one focus, the focus being the landscaping side of future building?
Yeah, so like part of the code, like if you're going to build, you know, let's say. All new housing developments, I would recommend their front yards all be zero speak. And if you want your, you know, if you want, if you want your grass yard, then you're gonna have to pay a fee or something along those lines.
And, but, but certainly in the effort to conserve, as you're saying, with existing residents, then we would not look. To use our existing water for huge additional developments, right?
Correct, I'm talking about future, like if, so like, so like if a big housing development comes in, that means future plans, this, this is. Like if you're going to build here, you're gonna pay a fee if you want your backyard to be grass. And you're going to do your front yards all zero speak within a requirement.
Mandatory gray water systems if we could get that for it, right?
Because I guess if you have metering, then you.
What do you, you mean like gray water system, you mean like if you're.
From your home.
Yeah, so like.
So it's not toxic or stuff, so then you let it go into your.
Well, sure, there are systems and I don't know, you know, there are ideas, like seven different layers of water usage. And gray water is typically for lawns, they use up in Sun Valley for almost all their landscaping, of course, gray water. Um, and it's part of why we're able to release gray water from your system, there's that it's legal, but I don't believe, I think Senator Taylor's looking into it. About for residential use, and it is something that, you know, I'm into microeconomics and micro into it, so you take care of. You know, you want better use of water, so you still get to enjoy your landscaping, so you get to do those things. But it processes through a certain filter, so even in Australia, that, that lack water, I think is the end, you can't really use it, but the rest of our. Seven different layers, same thing with Austria, so some, especially in Europe, it's.
You know, one of the things you guys, you're kind of talking around is a big project that we, that Brian's gonna have to get a candle on is. We have a work, our, our comp plan needs to be.
Well, that, yeah, that's.
And, and that process.
Yeah.
Is, takes in a, a quite a bit of some of this stuff too, because. Actually, you want to set your priorities, so when, when you look at your, your developments that come in, say, and, and when you write your ordinances. Uh, you know, you can say, well, we want to prioritize water conservation and.
Yeah. I was just gonna say, tying that all together, it sounds like water conservation is a theme I'm hearing coming through. I think there's some semantics to it.
Yeah, no, no, that's the sustainability.
And then um, Diane and both Diane and myself have written on a sticky note, um, the comprehensive plan. So getting, getting that started in twenty twenty five, knowing that that's a process. Um, but, you know, we're talking about a lot of future. Future stuff here, and that um, really does tie back to kind of the comprehensive plan, which. Um, you know, upon review is, is missing some of these sections for um. From what it, what it has been to what it could be, so putting that as a priority.
Hey, Tom, if it is, when county ever finished their comp plan?
Yes, yes, it's a short answer, it was a long process, uh, that's why I kind of chuckled a little bit on that, but, ye- yes.
Kind of a long process, holy cow.
Well, you know, not tend, tend to overstate, but the uh, um. And, and maybe a distinction between a comprehensive plan, which is focused on the land use decision-making. And kind of the strategic plan, which is, you know, maybe a little broader, it's, the comp plan is sort of a subset maybe of a broader strategic.
So again, you want to hand that up.
Yeah, I think, um, you know, as we move into revising the comp plan, I think we're really gonna have to take a look at. The chapter that is implementation, because we spent a lot of time drafting that back in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. And um, there's a lot of those things in the implementation section of the comp plan that haven't even been addressed. So it's kind of like that list of priorities is already, it's already there. Um, but I, you know, I definitely think we need to revisit that as we move into the comp plan, definitely.
I want to touch a little bit on what we kind of discussed about the comp plan about, you know, there's ways in which to go about it for these like. You know, ten, twenty year ones, and then there's kind of shorter window comp plan approaches.
As far as doing like a smaller update versus a whole new plan, yeah, you can approach it either way.
We'll kind of dive into is, you know, looking at the comp plan, knowing that it was done twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, but it has some gaps, you know, are we doing more of a. Uh, slightly shorter term revisement of our already existing comp plan versus a large overhaul and kind of looking at uh. Timing of how, how we'd like to kind of progress on that, so when we're looking at comp plans, you know, it doesn't always have to be a. Ten-year project to get it, to, to bring it to the table, you know, looking at it as a. A slightly more succinct um, thing that could happen more often.
Like a living, so it becomes a living document, so that then we're, we're continuously. Representing it and then continuously achieving things. It has its milestones, it has its objectives, and we use that in our planning and we use it in our budgeting, right? So if we're gonna budget, and I just want to share this, if. I know ideally we have a certain amount of money. But I think doing this, then our budget should reflect what our, what we say are our priorities. That's really the key to budgeting, right? And it'd be so nice to see. The city of Bellevue start a budgeting cycle with, really with what. We collectively come out when saying these are our priorities and you know that the citizens want them also. And then we reflect that in how we budget our departments and how we budget.
We've nailed on, we've nailed on the happy intention, right, here, and then also um. But, you know, at, at, looking at comp plans and letting them be a little bit more of a flipping breathing thing. Um, transition of leadership also allowing the comp plan to kind of be. A guide that um, can carry through with transition of leadership rather than um, something that hasn't been referred to much and.
Yeah, and then, and then the tone changes every single time.
Mm-hmm.
It shouldn't.
Not as dramatic, right?
Yeah, when you should do your comp plan, I think submit like every census, because there's a chapter in the comp plan. They say demographics, that, how that changes, so it's usually pretty good.
Well, and I think.
People are, you know, when this new census comes out, it's usually a pretty good time to start thinking about your comp.
You, in terms of this desire, and we all share it for better budgeting and, and, and a more real time. That is also part of what ClearGov gives us through clear plans is specifically for strategic planning, and you did get the budgeting module. Which now is exactly the fodder that's been lacking, right, where you have to move things, you have to, you, you can't hide them anymore. On a PDF, they're all there for us to analyze and be accountable for, right? So exactly what you're talking about is what we all embrace, you know, in selecting that tool. So. Yeah, I have one, um, housing security for residents. All right, does everyone know what I mean by that? Okay, so not, not making their monthly um, costs unaffordable. By what, through our decisions of increases in fees or changes in our environment that impact their ability to ensure their homes or get services at their homes and things like that.
How many on the front of that?
Um. I, I guess, I, I saw on the city's website about uh, the council will be discussing on a future agenda. Um. Not accepting park reservations. I don't know if that's been on the website for a while, and just kind of, you know, I know how websites sometimes don't.
Oh, yeah.
But, um, you know, it says the city of Bellevue is currently evaluating the, the health of the soccer field and softball fields. We're also in the process of determining how to mitigate the parking problems that occur in those parks. Uh, weren't used at the same time, for these reasons, we're currently not accepting park reservations, the council will be discussing this on a future agenda.
And that's on the website right now?
Yes.
There's a lot of stuff that was copied over, so if you dig down.
And so I guess maybe it's kind of general park reservation, but you know, the broader kind of.
Because they were gonna just transfer.
Yeah.
Parks and how the citizens and.
Now you might look, we won't.
So to focus, to focus the discussion back, so looking at um, kind of, I think there's a lot there, kind of health of the parks. Community utilization and then city management.
So if we're going with parks, I keep on hearing skate park from community members.
Okay.
Yeah.
Skate park?
Skate park, it's just their mark, and they're like, Tessa, how do we do this? And I'm like, a capital campaign.
And I'll get on the bus and do it.
Take that on.
That, oh, I, I actually ties a little bit back to the community economic development meeting we had with the grant writer. Um, there's a lot within that category that ends up falling into parks and health and wellness for the community. So if that is something, you know, looking to pursue in terms of parks and health and wellness of the community. I think there's great, great opportunities out there for that, so.
Right.
Not necessarily.
Well, and I actually know someone by chance from previous, like years ago, who went around the world and started a movement of building skate parks. But they do a lot of work and do presentations for the cities and what it provides with community connection and so.
I think my um, asset management thing goes with all of those, like work and all that.
Uh, can I add on a more accountable Bellevue, just in general, from citizens?
Yeah.
Encounter. Continuously run into, it's either my way or the highway. That's the rule for you, it's not the rule for me, my dog can run around, your dog has to stay here, I can water my lawn at five P M. Um, you know, like there's like the, a mentality here that I feel like there's just been three.
Equal application of law.
Yeah, yeah, just like, yeah, the ordinance is, or you know, establishing like this is not, you know, um. And we had, you know, general conversations from, yeah, there's a lot of new people moving in in our community and cow catcher, everybody's from out of state. And I've had to tell multiple, you know, multiple households, hey, you can't snow blow into your yard, or hey, like, did you know about your trash can? Or but, so it's the communication, but also all holding each other accountable. But showing up for each other as well, instead of pointing the fingers at everybody else.
And I think that's something I had, you know, thought about and spoken to a little bit was. When I talk about accountability, yes, I talk about accountability coming from city hall, which I think is what, what we owe as citizens. But also how does that then trickle out within the community and community members being accountable as well, you know? Applying for your fence permit, you know, getting your encouragement, you know, encouragement currents, um, making sure you have your business licenses and, you know. Compliance in terms of on those, you know, government levels and then as citizen accountability and what that looks like. So um, if we kind of refocus that from, you know, the internal city view, what can we be doing? How can we support citizen accountability and what does that look like? Does that look like more education and communication? Um, does that look like, you know, kind of thinking through that from a strategic level, how from a city hall standpoint can we promote more citizen accountability?
Model the behavior.
That is one of my concepts.
And that's what we are doing with all these systems, so I'm just.
Starting from the inside model that they've been from city hall, of course, right?
They need to see.
And then what, what's that next layer of accountability? Because I, I do think that is a, a very important subject to kind of solve this on, on a citizen level. And, you know, part of that trickles back to us of equal application of the law, equal application of, you know, fees, equal application of. Kind of all, all of that, um, and then, you know, what does that look like in terms of our role in um, education and or holding citizens accountable? So that, I would just put that back to the table, think a little bit further.
Mm-hmm.
On how we could apply it.
Continue, I mean, obviously, a good start, you've got your newsletter going out and. Start, you know, continuing to educate, have, have a portion of that newsletter to be inclusive, like before. It's time to water your lawn, you know, the more people see things and hear things.
Right.
The more likely they are to recall them, what have you, and to know that it isn't just a neighbor being. A P I A, it is. These are real rules, you know, these are things, you're not supposed to blow into the street. You're not supposed to, you know, we, we live in a community and as we are trying to be a micro, have a micro sense. We are still connected in the macro way, and so we can't just say, this is just my arena.
So, and something that, um, I think Jessica and I actually spoke about, and I don't know if this is silly or that we've seen it in other cities, but. You know, when someone moves to the community, often the first step is to establish a water and sewer account, right? To start receiving services or about, um, is there a welcome to Bellevue?
Absolutely, that's a great idea.
You know, welcome to Bellevue packet, that just kind of has a little bit of um, you know, community member expectations or, you know. Rules and regulations of living in this small community.
And I think, and I also think like the one thing I hear is um, uh, language that I co- commonly hear, my Idaho. My Bellevue, my house. My community and starting to change it, you know, our community and.
Not, am I gonna say our house?
No, not our house, but like, you know, our, our street, our, this is our street. This is our community, this is our. This is our community, this is our town, this is our main street. Like because, um, in the, some of the feedback I've gotten, like the, the rules and being scared and the change. And it's like, okay, well, like, why not refocus on what's ours? And how to make it, like, not like, our Bellevue is great, but like, how can we really make our Bellevue better?
I mean, I think when you're referring to the rhetoric, I think there's, you know, pride elements there.
Yeah.
And which isn't always detrimental, but also, um, kind of creating a little bit more community collaboration. So, um, you know, asking citizens to, uh, kind of participate in the betterment of Bellevue. And so that's generally kind of part of looking at the strategy is, um, you know, of course, people wanna see improvements in streets, wanna see these things in their parks, but what does that take? Does that take more monetary contribution? Does that take more, um, citizen accountability and kind of looking at as where?
Or is it volunteerism?
Vol- volunteerism, yeah.
Okay.
Right.
What opportunities exist for that?
I mean, I didn't, right, and so I've been working on trying to build volunteers. We are a working community and like getting, getting, having the opportunity to volunteer. A lot of people don't have it even if they want to. But providing a tool that makes it easy for them to then volunteer or show up for, yeah.
Uh, per your, per the point of how this trickles down though, is I think there's a very well-established philosophy and, and it's been proven and it's really out of law enforcement, but it's, it's the broken window philosophy. And when you look across the street or you're driving up and everybody's sprinklers are going on a long time. And you, so you don't see enforcement there and you see this is left out and you see behaviors that are not, uh, do not, why would you do it? Why would you bother? Um, when you see things, and so part of what we're talking about is the, is enforcing what we want to see so that other people don't see the broken window. I mean, they have studies, if there's a broken window, they start breaking other windows. It's, it's just the nature of the beast. So that is part of what we've all talked about with ordinances and forcing, yeah.
So I just wrote down code enforcement because I know it's been a topic that's come up.
Yeah.
And I think that's kind of part of, you know, I said, what can City Hall do?
Right.
To, uh, you know, help aid in accountability? Well, code enforcement is part of what we can do.
Inspire better behavior.
Along, along with these other tools we're talking about, but I think code enforcement has come up and I wanna bring it back into the accountability category. I think that's an important place for.
We have a police force, I'm sorry.
Only that that can mean of, um, someone's paying attention a little bit to
Yep.
water use or, you know, other things, um, so that people just are kind of aware. Well, they are kind of monitoring that, doesn't have to be like, you know, hardcore code enforcement. Like, you know, everything you do that's wrong gets fine attached to it or something of that nature, but it can be, we're paying attention to these things and they matter to us.
I think code enforcement also comes, you know, when we look at achievements from 2024, staffing with department heads allows us to, you know, within the category of what those codes fall into. So is it public workers, is it community and development? You know, having department heads, uh, aware and able to kind of monitor code enforcement. And then working on the system of application of code enforcement. I think we need to kind of make sure we have all those systems in place to close the loop. Cause then there's still a gap in code enforcement that needs to be addressed internally on application.
I mean, you've got a basic air bones police forces as, as exists. I mean, and you guys can say, we just want you to take emergency calls for people getting beat up and stuff. We don't like trolling mainstream, writing steam tickets, we want you out in the community. Just as an example, you know, more community policing, which wouldn't, would entail code enforcement, code education type aspects of police enforcement.
We're getting into the.
But I did, you know, with neighbors helping neighbors though, with, it was like a single mother who didn't have the resources that helped get rid of those things. It was like coincided when she was there, she did get an enforcement and she didn't know who to trust and who to turn to. But people just started dumping things on her property because they thought it was just a junkyard. But she works two jobs, has five kids. You know, she's on her own with, with, without that support. But so if we're gonna do enforcement, also provide resources of where they can get help. So like, hey, if they have a car, this is how you can get rid of your car, right? Because a lot of people don't like, you have, yeah, there's people in different circumstances that we all have to realize that we are representing, they do not have the time. And just like, so like, what can we do to provide education like, hey, this is your warning. Here's this, here's this ordinance you have, if we know a proper timeframe, you know, this will take a week or two weeks to get rid of a car or something along those lines, right? If it's not removed, you will be cited. But I don't know if that takes more work on our staff, but it's also like, you know, for a community who hasn't addressed things for so many, so many years, but also our council just got a pay increase for the first time. And who knows how long that most council members were paid fifty dollars a month and the mayor was paid so long. So like, and not having staff paid efficiently is also probably why we've all ran into these things. We haven't had the attention and the people paying attention to these things. So I just think if we're gonna do enforcement, there's certain things to provide education and.
Well, I think there's, there's no doubt about a method of enforcement. I don't think anyone, I mean, you can go and TP houses instead of doing fee, you know, penalties and all that. You can come up with a method of enforcement, but there must be a consistent.
Right.
So people see it again, a broken window, just let's not let broken windows go hot rains. How do we make that apparent? And it doesn't always have to be a financial cost. It can be, you know, like I said, somebody TP's your house, I, you know, whatever the method is, it should be discussed, right? And rolled out and.
Make a little note about resources.
Um, and there's what, a hundred and forty-six nonprofits in the city?
A sub of where you see those resources.
Get them, well, let's partner up with them and get them to move the car.
We have.
That's great, but I'm just like, it's not, you shouldn't ask for other residents to subsidize it, but we, there are ways that we could come up with the service partnering with other organizations like you guys do. And like you do already, taking a bunch of the things.
So, uh, providing kind of resource information, how to just cap that surplus. Tammy or Tom, do you have another one to put up?
I, I don't know where this stands and I, I know it's not ever, uh, a a topic that anyone wants to talk about. And I love all the guys, but it has nothing to do with people, right? Our job is provide services, not, not just, I like Joe and I, I want him to stay. And so, uh, where has there been any conversation over the viability of consolidating emergency services?
Tammy, can you? Can you, can you repeat what you said?
I can say, actually, the conversation around the viability of consolidating emergency services.
Okay.
Is that something you would, you see is, um, you know, kind of wanted to be part of the kind of maybe scope of discussions about emergency preparedness? Or do you see that being kind of a separate, just like when we're looking at budget? Um, where do you, where do you see that?
I see that as a, um, immediate but long-term strategic position on, really on budgeting. So if we're, if we're setting priorities, we have three officers trying to cover the city. To Rick's point, we could give them, you know, we could prioritize what we want our law enforcement to be, you know? But also, so it's kind of just looking at that in general, not, I guess, not necessarily just consolidation, but looking at the, our prioritization of our emergency services.
So.
Look at.
Yeah, as part of our analysis, we wanna see if that's a, if that meets our goals, right? Of that methodology.
One, this is very narrow, but kind of, and it's consistently with the events that the city has, um, is what I perceive as city need to focus a little more attention on its Labor Day celebration.
It's the same last call, you and I. Great.
Um, I, I, you know, I mean, that's all, it's been part of Bellevue's thing forever. Um, Labor Day celebration kind of its event a little bit, uh, and, um, yeah, I, you know, again, that's maybe a volunteer opportunity for people to get engaged in the parade and get engaged in the event. And, and I know Sean's been a long part of that kind of effort. Um, but, you know, you want people to, to these events, maybe people to stop and visit and do things and, and kind of expands the, the business opportunity as well. So.
Can I, can I add on to that? So for, for one, like, I feel like, um, city of Bellevue, council members and or staff haven't been involved in the Labor Day parade, like the mayor has been involved, but like participation from council. So the city of Bellevue, our two events are the Christmas tree lighting, which Kristen has been running on her own and I assisted with. Thanks, is this two years, I don't know, I, I don't, yes, no, I assisted with this year, sorry. It's all, it's all a blur right now, but like, participation, like maybe we could break up and like, you know, like three, you know, council people can be on the Labor Day, like being part of that. And then three on like the Christmas tree lighting, so we're not all, I know everybody's time is volunteer hours and so valuable. But having that also like Hispanic representation and for the Labor Day that there is no, you know, I asked last year for, you know, can we add on an extra day for the Hispanic community and that was not included. Um, I think.
You're talking about a music representation? Okay, I was gonna say vendor representation is high.
Yeah.
Music representation.
Yeah, just like general cultural representation intertwined and also standards on our plate. For.
Not just all airport trucks. Well, I, I think there was some discussion too about, you know, we are, we are talking about Main Street. The event takes place on Main Street.
Yeah.
Perhaps this should showcase our existing businesses rather than lunch trucks that drive in or go on, and it should stay on Main Street and the focus should be on benefiting the restaurants that are on Main Street and the small businesses. Yeah, what I'm, what I'm saying, like, anyway, so I think you're right, de- depending on what your goals are, right? When you say, we wanted to reflect better, last year's parade was, was not widely well-received, right? And so maybe just clarifying the, the purpose of the parade and then going from there with your point on some.
I could only comment since I do and have done a lot of events in the community. Uh, it's a lot of work.
Yeah.
So it, we can, if we want to be represent, and I, I fully support that and I think we have great opportunity for some of these events that really reflect who we are as a city and then things that bring commerce, you know, are, are important to do. But there is, there is a lot of work and it can't just be led by one person. And, you know, it might be beneficial as we're developing the events committee. You know, that, that there is, if we wanna support it, if Bellevue supports it and underwrites it at all, we should have a little more representation and be part of the planning for it as well.
I think that will come up in the next steps a little bit, so.
There should be a dental floor to handle all the team.
Let's get through kind of our last few, um, for sake of time, we're just, let's keep rolling through our last few city notes.
Mine's again broad, I think everyone has that, I like to go generic, best-in-class services and delivery. And what I mean by that is, uh, there should be a customer bill of rights. The customer should know what is appropriate for them, these are not uncommon for utilities in other states, other communities, stating what the, they should expect from the prices they pay for the services that, um, they're supposed to receive, right? So you should know, and they dictate the operation of the department, right? It's like any business, you know, you have requirements for your business and it drives that your business is open eight to five. So it means you have to schedule people from seven thirty to three and then three to seven for cleanup or what have you. So the same thing within all of our departments, understanding, um, that they have to get back if there's an incident and it must be logged and it must be published within twenty-four hours. If there has to be follow-up, whatever those things are, that we establish, um, better requirements for the services.
I see, you have two more?
Uh, uh, mostly not, I would say it's been kind of covered by others. Um, I mean, this neighbors helping neighbors was the note, I'm curious to know more about that idea, but, um, and then some work on communications, which, you know, always the intention is to help with the image, I guess. What City Hall does and, and contributes to the community. And, yeah, so I, I, I don't have anything, I just want my question.
You have a couple more, Suzanne?
No, I just, you know, safety, the one you all tore down, no prescriptive transfer of wealth. And the, erase that photograph.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I think it's been a, a great, you know, gathering of stickies. Maybe you should put your stickies on with some of the other ones that Brian will stick them in there as additional support. We'll know it was you peach colored stickies.
I mean, the water plant work, that, that's.
Yeah, 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 but that's a.
I don't know if this would fall into anything, I didn't write it down, but because of our limited budget, if you will, but our desire to, um, accomplish things that really represent the city and then, and not just for individual homeowners, but people driving through and, you know, coming into the city of Bellevue. Then we could pursue more public-private partnerships. I know some of the other cities in, in, and I know we do, but that we could pursue that a little bit more as well to help, since we don't have a, on staff grant writer, let's say, you know, we don't just to help fill in the gaps, like with, and I know it's mine, so I'm not really specifically promoting neighbors helping neighbors. But to the point of that we do need support, let's say with um, commu- like, uh, community policing, if you will, is there a way that we could engage other organizations, nonprofit organizations to help us fulfill in these gaps? And, and have an MOU with them, like we do with transportation and stuff like that? Just another opportunity.
Is that something you want us to be, kind of throw up there or? Yeah, let's just stick on that. Diane, anything else to add that you feel like we?
Yeah, I do have a couple of things. Um, uh, one of them is upgrades to City Hall. I don't know if everybody has had an opportunity to walk around the building and see, um, how it's being supported. Um, we're also outbrowing City Hall. Our, our council chambers is, the configuration of it is, it just doesn't work. And so, uh, you know, that's probably a long term and maybe pie in the sky. But boy, it sure would be nice to, to have a healthy, a healthy building. Um, and, uh, and to that end, uh, I attended a Bellevue Museum Board Meeting earlier, or I guess it was last summer, uh, and, um, they really want some attention from City Hall. Their building also, uh, is in dire need of upgrades. Um, and, uh, so, uh, those are a couple of things that, you know, are, are gonna be spendy undertakings, but I think, uh, we should try and address those, um, as soon as we can. And, and I will add on to the parks, uh, to the Labor Day celebration. Um, in the last few years, we've really outgrown that space. Uh, and I don't know what the solution to that is. But, uh, maybe part of, you know, and this all kind of ties together, maybe part of the downtown revitalization in vacating some of those dead-end streets is to keep that Labor Day celebration maybe down on Main Street a little bit more. Um, you know, to support our businesses, uh, instead of everything heading up to the park after the parade is over with. I'm missing something.
No, it is Jessica saying, keep saying.
But I think it's true, you could even have one.
Yeah, and they have to go really slow down one street, down one of our dirt roads, right by branching out. And then they have to go really slow and park and come to our lager.
Well, great, I feel like we've got, um, kind of a solid start. I think what we should do real quick, we should just take a little break here, a little pause. Give Ryan just an opportunity to organize some of these. give Ryan just an opportunity to organize some of these thoughts of the categories. Um, and then we'll come back and kind of look through that and start to discuss next steps. Just, yeah, so maybe a little five-minute break, candy break, and then, um, we'll come back and use the rest of our time to focus on next steps. Okay?
Okay.
Awesome.
Thank you, we're working on updating our documents and policies, but here is what we have, um, you know, the law team, right, everything. Letting you know it first that, and then he's sending you some part of that.
And expanding on, like, the offerings, you know, like we're, like we're talking about, loss isn't just engaged, after loss, loss is engaged. All we can do is set out, ensure messaging, support people, support their families, right? And it'd be nice to consider, I think we should look at, especially after, after yesterday, just we went over the jug and the, um, Indian family and oldies now, and then, you know,
Oh, I sent her and I said you were gonna be helping, and I said that, that was sort of a, if we put that, yeah. It is my passion.
And I'd be willing to look for a way to pay her that, first act, you know, maybe even a hundred dollars, or maybe that. I mean, it's worth it to me when I think about peer-to-peer and the support that is not there, that people are even how, we don't.
And just having her, yeah, also, and she said she's interested in joining, so I will send her info on that.
So today, as a priority, I want to get, I want to get an application, you know, something, some kind of brief that people can fill out a form.
Like, yeah, this is due with my penmanship, but that's.
I'm working.
You gotta get the idea of that when you're writing that form.
Do you mind, do you mind drafting it?
Yeah, I did already.
Okay, and can you send it to me?
I know, I know, I did send it, but it was, I didn't have to do it, so it could be.
If it's the forms that I have, then I have to, uh, I'd be suicidal, a lot, and she said, I haven't shared it.
And I need to find some old man yoga class.
So, yeah, you wanna look and revise.
Have you used that Peloton app?
Yeah.
Right.
For classes, uh?
No, I haven't.
It's really, really remarkable because you have a choice of tons, tons of different stuff.
We do, but we have to fold it up, you know, but, um, and I think, there's just a lot of, there's a lot of different, there's a lot of different skills, I think.
Yeah.
So we have to kind of get into it, I do think it's pretty.
Oh, wow.
I liked, um, I liked Bradley.
I like.
No, I know. I know, you know what, so, I just found a.
I came, I came like my secretary, uh, to go to, but, um, I don't go.
I didn't really, I didn't work well.
Oh, yeah.
I walk into those places and I just.
Yeah.
I like to, I like, I like cross countries, I like to, not by cross countries, you know, I kind of like credit, combined, something I like to do with, you know.
Agree. You know, I, I got a whole example of stuff.
But I'm not getting any, you know, I see a lot, it's a bit simple.
I actually still play soccer, I usually just play a one big tournament a year and beat up with my old people. And although last time, I didn't play that, two years ago, I was nailing it, I just found the BMT, and it's in any fit. And that was one of the needs when I was on my service, I learned by Sunday, I put my friends, it was, um, kind of seemed like unusual. And they were so impacted from all the pounding.
And in part of those, and in part of that, you know.
And I just wasn't, and you guys, but that's that county. Yeah, I was just, my state was so sold, it couldn't matter how much you were built, I mean, they wanted to shoot me, I mean, that makes, uh, well, he was also over the, the. And, uh, and so I really, you know, I played, and I was like, man, I knew crisis was off the, when they're unable to.
Yeah, the whole thing, yeah, that when you realize you're prepared for any kind of year, 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 so.
Oh, and, yeah, well, again, to mess with, I was like, and I never, I was so sick, I didn't have to ever start.
Wanting to keep.
It was expelling, like, oh my god.
Yeah. I need to go through it, I told them this morning, I'm gonna go through all of it, I'm gonna send you a lot of things, so I'm gonna go through it. But one of the things that, yeah, in that situation, because.
Yeah, we need to strip it up, so like the cards, the cards that we give to law enforcement to, or have a seventy-six number, but it'll say, like, it'll, well, no, and then they carry, not they, then she can send out a thing that it says for sign, you know, if you're in that's in suicide, that it's this is the number you call, because.
And the verification from hospice.
Well, because at hospice, just the sudden come explain that they're not calling out the, they're not calling out the lost team.
Which we should, which is part of the policy.
Exactly, this is part of the policy, this is how it goes, and this is what I need to update.
I have a, where you. Where's your, my, it's pretty cute, it's for our staff.
I, I think it's out there kind of, I mean, it's kind of broad, I mean, it's kind of, you know, it's kind of hiking bike. I think it's, when I was fixing that, I was, I was supposed to be, I was supposed to, like, I was like, sure, connection there. Trail from here to Haley, yeah, I went around.
Like that, most of it, like that, just mean trails.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm, I'm.
Well, I mean, I, uh, we always have loved that trail out Slaughter House, the little, for that one.
Yeah, I think they're trying to connect Slaughter, yeah, can connect Slaughter House. On a quick Saturday.
Yeah.
But it's a whole, whole horrible run it out, uh, watch out.
It's interesting you say that, my brother is not such ecstatic on the four-wheel, because he lived up in Indian Creek, and he was like, but his, and his partner's brother started to say, he's getting a big rush, but my brother was like, oh my god.
No, so they're supposed to put a single track, like, track, all the way up Slaughter House, you can come out here if you want.
That's, that's awesome, I mean, because it's fun to have the, so they all walk, my mom lives in the heavy ones. And, um, so they left Indian Creek with my kid and the dogs, and their dogs, and they all end up, but my mom's walking on the trails for Thanksgiving. That's better. Walking up between the, when you have, you know, when you have the time and you're out on the bike now or.
The bike has fun for.
It's traveling, and for doing it. I got, I mean, I got, I went to that tournament I was telling you about, we had a big, we had a storm and I wouldn't bother anybody, and I Nordic, that, back around the. And then when I dropped it off, I, I, right?
That's one of the best things they ever did in this valley was take out a railroad grid, although would have been.
Now for the transportation, yeah.
Would have been nice coming out.
Yeah. Oh, it's, uh, yeah, it's still one of those, you know, they're, they're extraordinary value.
Yeah, I, I, I love the bike.
I think it's so cool, I mean, at least I have.
I just like not having a private, I can leave my house, it's not like, it's a double-tail, so it's really awesome.
No, it's, it's, uh, my son goes to school out there, um, I, I, every time I go on that, just go quickly Nordic, or, you know, the kids go out on a pump trip or whatever.
Yeah, I take the dogs, I call it quickly Nordic, I call that the lower intestine, and it's the appendix.
Exactly.
Then, then you come back, but, you know, if you ever get a chance, have you ever been all the way up to ponds, up to the pond?
Only once.
It's so beautiful, in the winter time, I always have dogs, so, I'm stuck in the.
That's what I mean, I'm stuck in a dog.
But every once in a while, my wife will pick the dogs up, okay, good, I get to go.
Yeah.
Go see.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's just.
It's so beautiful. I put it against anything of north, it's so pretty.
I love it, um, and I was just so grateful we got the snow down here, we didn't have to, we're happy, you know, with our.
I forget what S M R A is, like, the closest place I made my dogs, but I don't like going on the bike path. I kind of bring the dogs.
Just come this morning and get back in.
I'd be exactly the same, thinking, especially, we also have this Chihuahua who could sound nice, like, so I'm looking for this Chihuahua, but then where's the big one who's going to? And I'm not sure he didn't get, but, you know, into trouble up in S R N R A, he's white, and I'm looking around, I'm looking around, and I'm just like. You know, and even that, one of the, the only trail I was going on was the only, it was such a nice trail, but I was like, it's just close enough. So I didn't even like to do that.
Unless they get a lot of snow, like, I was really nervous when they're.
Yeah, exactly. Well, we have the same. I, I hear, and you don't, they take off so suddenly, they're right with you, and we have beepers, I got, we got trackers, and we got all of it, so, and yet, I'm just like, you know.
It happens.
And my kids are, so I'm trying to watch it. Ridiculous, yeah, so I'm like, let's just go in deep or, you know.
Yeah, so I like guessing, I like feeling the interview.
Exactly, yeah, exactly.
That scares me in the, the river, when the river springs up, very dark, through the ice, and you know, so that's when you cross that ridge. Yeah, I'm always afraid they're gonna get stuck under the ice somehow.
I, I, I agree with that as well.
I can't take them out, and then it's that one thing that runs up, so they'll disappear in it.
What are those ones?
Yeah, so they can't, I don't know how to get out, but they, but they'll take on, they'll.
Sounds like my dog and your dog would have a shot, they're inside together. Really, but I, you know, it's, I, I do love the going up quickly, where it is, to me, if you're standing on the dog loop, like, quickly, you shouldn't be on it if you have a dog person, it's the one place that your dog and.
For our on Zoom, we just have a few people.
You know, it's not even, but I just.
Using the bathroom to wrap up.
Seven percent of people are the same way of thinking, and then every now and then you get.
Your dogs, they're down, I'm like, I can't.
There's, they've got places to, if you don't want dogs.
Exactly, that's why, it's like.
Do the dog, deny dog.
You're just like, they're sneaking you, though, this rarely happens, you know, really, but when it does, I'm always like, why have you just been?
And most of the dogs are gonna be running across the road, everyone's like, running across that, if you have a dog, it probably ought to be muzzled before, or anything, because they're a little bit mean. Most of the dogs on leashes, yeah.
Yeah, my Chihuahua's quite a little growl.
Chihuahua's one of the meanest animals.
But he's not, he's a, he's a voice maker, because he's fun to release, so, his brother's never had sign with another dog. And then he comes running up in a wool jacket, he's only three, he's only a three. Oh, trust me, I, I wish I'd never stopped and picked him up.
Yeah.
Oh, no, but he's actually, he's, he's super sweet, but I wouldn't have done it if it hadn't been desperate.
Yeah, we're just waiting on Jessica, remember, ready, bro? Okay, thank you for those on Zoom, for your patience, we fill a little more than five-minute breaks, but we're back to it now. And, um, Brian's gonna kind of review what we put together here.
So I was gonna type this all out, and then I decided to just go super low by, uh, so I kind of put these into some buckets. Uh, we've got over here housing security and affordable living. Most popular category, infrastructure and services, uh, community enhancements, accountability, communication, regional collaboration, and then just core foundational zoom. So where you kind of think that's right?
Where's the emergency preparedness, where did that go?
Our emergency preparedness, part of regional collaboration.
Yeah.
Where are you on?
Well, I, I just wanted to discuss it, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say. Um, it, it seems to be to be a core service that needs to be, and as far as I know, it, it does not truly exist as a concept. So I think it is infrastructure, okay, thank you, no, I'm not saying it doesn't.
No, I think, like, there's a whole.
Yeah, I mean, I did, yeah, I, well, that's why I've given it, but I think to start, we even have to decide, is this something we commit to? And then it would proceed to, how would we implement?
Diane, do you want me to read those categories again?
Yes, please.
Okay, housing, security, and affordable living. Infrastructure and services. Enhancements. Accountability and communication. Core decision-making and governance. And then regional collaboration.
Thank you.
Nice category, I mean, that is a, that is a nice.
So from this, let's talk a little.
Yeah, so next steps, I'm gonna like formalize this a little bit and kind of write it out. Uh, like I said, I'm really kind of assigned each of you to be the champion of one of these categories. Sort of cat does take your desires into consideration, so if you have wishes, let me know, talk to me ahead of time. Uh, this, um, kind of kind of the plan from there, uh, things we're gonna plug into are committee assignments as far as parks events, um, Resort Cities Coalition, county projects, et cetera, et cetera, there's a lot of places that we could, which we want. Um, and just, I'll kind of look at some suggestions on how we should create use. And then, uh, like, like you said, we're gonna be working with our department to present these categories that are broad, holistic theme for the year, uh, that we'll go into how they're kind of prioritizing their work plan for their staff for the next year. That'll feed into the budget process as far as what we're prioritizing, uh, and help make those decisions a little bit easier.
And then to add to that, um, kind of the presentation of this information that Brian will put together will likely come on our January twenty-seventh city council meeting. And then, um, after that, we have a town, our first town hall scheduled on the twenty-ninth, the evening of January twenty-ninth. Um, and that will be an opportunity to have kind of a community-level discussion about community priorities for this year. Um, and just getting, uh, you know, some open, kind of hopefully open, honest, uh, communication from our citizens to, to see what they see as a community. Um, and that gives us an opportunity to kind of cross-reference, um, and see how, what we put out here aligns with what's also coming from community feedback.
Are we required to be there for this?
You are not required to be there for the town hall.
Great.
Yes. And also, it may just kind of be more, uh, let's not have a full town hall?
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's a more of a citizen, citizen-led discussion.
Great.
That's for your town hall.
It'll be here. And that will be, um, republized, we alluded to it, you know, put a date on everybody's calendar in the first newsletter, we'll make sure that is communicated again in the second newsletter, and, um, also on social and website. Um, and thinking through a potential survey for those who can't attend in person or opportunity for promise, so.
Mayor, do you think, um, City Hall is big enough?
You, for this first one, I think that also without having all council here, I can tighten up the desks quite a bit and create, uh, add more seating for. Add more seating for participants who come in.
And if we, we could even try to do RSVPs to even get a sense, but.
Yeah, I think that'll be sufficient for, uh, the first time, and, you know, if it isn't for any reason, we can pivot from there. Yeah, I'd love to have that problem.
Right, I didn't.
Yeah.
Are we, are we also trying to be inclusive of our Hispanic community in doing this as well? And I'm always sharing, and this is another public, private partnership opportunity where I know the hunger coalition just had a, a meeting with local business owners. To discuss some of the things that are happening, you know, na- nationally, right? And so, we could use their, uh, they have space there, if we wanted to, we could use their space and use their connections as an opportunity. Because we do have a huge Latino population.
Translator.
And then have, we could make sure to have a translator available, I just think that, like, that's a great, this is something, a great opportunity for us as well. As we're moving forward as a community, that we are being as inclusive as possible, not just saying, we're, I posted this in Spanish, that's not. Inclusive, I'm not, you know, I'm just throwing that out there, just in the work that I do, so.
I want, I wanna know that if we are looking at accountability and communication category, that I feel like this didn't come up in this discussion quite as late as this, so. We would write that down and post it, let's add that to that, um, I think.
I meant to say that.
It's like, it happened, there's, there's a lot discussed, so I think let's add that to the accountability and communication category, that's really important. Um, I, I take that feedback, and I think that's something to think about for the town halls and the meetings moving forward. For this first one, I think we'll do what we can in the short term to be as inclusive as possible, knowing that we have room to grow in, um, kind of. Opening that up a little bit more to more of our community, and figuring, like you said, kind of the private public partnerships there.
I mean, I can make sure to that, well, one, are, there is a lot, the library in Haley, they have headsets, right? So we could rent them, and or a part of our neighbors, helping neighbors, my team, I can make sure that somebody is here from. You know, them to at our, at that event, so then when we're promoting it also, we can say, we do have that, so that we're not precluding people.
And I found a lot of the people that subscribe to Bellevue Matters, and that I spoke to on the campaign trail letter Hispanic, are also, you, you know, not all of them, obviously, but. A fair number of them are dual language, right? Um, so I, I think you're spot on, and the website will be translated into both, it is translated, you know, we use a tool for that, so I take your point a hundred percent, I just think we. Um, as Christina was saying, it's, um, something to aspire to and figure out how to, how to make it work, but we're covering a lot more people than we've ever covered, just with the town hall, and with the new order.
Any other aspects of next steps that you feel like we need to cover?
Anybody have any questions?
Did I get a job?
Not yet.
Oh.
Uh, only a bit of question, have we put on our social media that we are giving a newsletter for people to subscribe to? I'm putting a link to subscribe within, uh, in bio.
Thank you, Tom. Um, not yet, okay, I think with city hall sickness is what I'll call this last week.
But once you give me the login, then we can even create a very small newsletter reminder or something like that to, to folks about subscribing, but.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all kind of falls into just adding to the communication.
Yeah, the public.
Um, the one thing that I have Brian compile, um, for us to just kind of go over was identifying what committees are qualified.
Yeah.
These are, you know, I kind of have a list of our. Really quickly, just. Our internal committees that we do have qualified. Oh, sorry. Um, our committee list, um, we have the library board, planning and zoning commission, parks committee, Bura, development impact fee advisory committee. And the labor day committee, which we have a reference to a resolution, um, for, uh, that we printed out, but it looks like, um, kind of, that was a.
It was a two-year deal.
Yes.
That would be a temporary, but it seems like there might be a desire for. Events committee.
Yeah, and so there are a couple, what we would consider more ad hoc committees, or external community committees, that, um, I would like to consider. Uh, bringing internally and doing, you know, uh, resolution and ordinance to make them official committees, and the events committee was one of those. So I just wanted to put that on the table and see what. You know, members who have been participating in the next committee thought, and, um, what that could look like for us, Diane, go ahead, so you have your hand up.
The, um, the museum is a committee, or maybe they're a board, Jessica, you might know the answer to that, but.
You're gonna have to talk a lot about that, um.
Yeah.
Uh, in a separate meeting.
Yep, perfect.
Okay.
Could you just quickly run through that list again?
Yeah, of course, library board, planning and zoning commission. Parks committee. Bura. Development impact fee advisory committee. And labor day committee, but I think based on this, it, and it ended at the end of last year.
Yeah.
I don't think we took it any further.
Yeah.
It was a very, it was a very short one, yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, when it was presented to us, um, we wanted to be sure that we.
We kept it short.
Yeah.
And, and maybe that leads to the point, that is part of the consideration or not, but one of the things that seems eventually relevant to these is some, um, kind of measurables. You know, oh, you know, there's maybe a timeline, for some, short, medium, long, and then also, you know, are we. Towards, you know, progressing towards our goal, or no, no progress towards the goal, you know, there's.
Right.
Too much familiarity, I think, with strategic plans, that seems like a relevant point to.
They're colorful, and stuff like that as well. Oh, absolutely, that's really the, the reason, and so, a lot of it is just affirming that we all share that desire, so, and we've all voted to say, well, let's make it so.
Right.
Um, so with that, I think that, um, I'd like to add, kind of bringing in the events committee as an official committee. And I would like to just consider what category, your category we could fit that into.
I kind of put the rest up in the enhancements.
Okay. And unless anyone's in direct opposition to that, is.
No, I think that sounds great, and, um.
Who's that?
Person with the library, I think she would be great to.
We can discuss, yeah, we can discuss them directly, so.
Yeah, yeah. Great.
Okay, great, um, were there any other, just from historic knowledge, uh, our community knowledge, any other ad hoc committees that we're not aware of that we feel. You know, I had mentioned museum, but that we feel, you know, weren't identified on the kind of more official committee list, or something that we're missing?
Um, we don't really have, like, a design review committee that I've seen in most places that I've lived, is like, the community is part of, like, you know, we're talking about. I know, like, there's people part of the comprehensive plan, but I don't know if that would be relevant on, you know. Bringing people in who have experience to take and help, you know, I don't know if that would be helpful to you in your department in having.
Uh, design reviews falls under the powers of the planning and zoning commission.
Yeah.
That's how they review it currently.
Okay.
I think that system probably works pretty well, as long as they are well trained, and it's formed, and they're supposed to make the decisions.
Right, right, yeah.
And then something along that.
It was more like, it's aesthetically of, of how things look.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It was.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
When, when we upgraded the wastewater treatment plant, we formed a citizens advisory committee. And I'm just throwing this out there right now, because of the state that. That is in, would that be something that you think might be beneficial as we're moving forward with the water, or wastewater. Projects that we have as citizens, can, you know, or, I mean, I'm just trying to, I know we formed it to decide which one. But it would, it might seem helpful to have something that, that can support the, the, the things that are happening down there and support us moving forward, or.
I think now that we have a, um, public work structure, which is a build that we haven't had in a while, I would lean on, um, kind of letting. Progressing to see kind of how the work progresses throughout the year, um, and it could be something that we, uh, kind of put in the back, you know, kind of in our category that we could add into later in the year, if we aren't satisfied with. Aspects of it, or feel that it needs more attention or more support, um, in some way, shape, or form, but yes, I think that that's a great tool to utilize when needed, I've not seen the need at this time. But it could be something we could definitely collectively consider bringing in later.
I think we meet part of that need with, again, the, the infrastructure that we're putting in with the operational tools. Because part of what you're talking about is an oversight, an examination, evaluation, and yet, what we've had, what has been problematic in the past, is we have no visibility into anything, so. Even capable people at the table have no idea what's going on, so, I think our first step into the goal, even if we got to that point where there was now internal debate, we couldn't decide, you look for some more informed people. But understanding exactly what's going on, and that's what these tools are for, for the, the budget line items, for listing all the projects, how has this contract with Merck been spent? What is the state of this, what is the state of repayment of the bonds, these kinds of things that even then are used even by folks like Shelley saying, lordy, look at this, I had. You know, this wasn't visible before, and so hopefully bring all that to the surface.
That's what I'm thinking halfway through the year, activating the tools that we've just, you know, that we're gonna put in place on the technology kind of side of things, and then if that's for any reason not satisfactory, revisiting that.
Then you have something to work from, right, you can say, ooh, we gotta look at this.
Okay, great, so, uh, I mean, if, any feedback, do the categories feel sufficient for everybody now to kind of then task Brian to do this next level with, does anyone have any feedback on that aspect of it? And please, if, if something comes up for you outside of this meeting, please feel free to email myself and Brian, um, I feel like we've covered a lot of ground, and it's nice to see all of that put into. Kind of succinct areas, um, for further discussion, so.
Great.
I think, yeah, that kind of wraps this up.
Thank you.
Morning and afternoon, and I really appreciate all of your time and coming prepared to have this discussion, um, and I look forward to. Kind of the work we can accomplish in these categories into the next year.
Thanks for making it easier to participate.
Wonderful. Do I need, oh, I would welcome the motion to adjourn this meeting.
And move to adjourn this meeting.
Second from Tammy Davis, all in favor? Thank you so much, everyone.
Sorry I couldn't make it in person.
We missed you, Diane.
So, so much gets lost on Zoom, can I just say that?
Everyone does.
Yeah, I mean, the acoustics in city, in, in our meeting room are, are awful, and it's just really hard. I mean, I was having to kind of try and like read lips most of the time, just to understand what was happening, but I, I am really sorry that I missed it. Uh, I think it was a great opportunity for everybody, um, you know, I don't think, I don't think, I don't think we've ever done anything like that, really. Um, so it was a, a good effort, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, all right, everyone stay healthy.
Yes, yes.